The Retirement System Board Trustees meeting is ordered. This is 9:00 AM on Thursday, October 28th. We have a full agenda today, starting with general business, but we'll start as we always do with our first one. We'll then join. First, congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, a nation in need of liberty and justice for all. That's right. We split to the flag of North Carolina and the flag of the United States of America. Thanks you all. Anyone wishing to make public comments, please email Patty at hall@instituteal.com. Please note this meeting is being recorded will be posted online as well as other board materials. We ask all of you, especially those joining us by phone, to meet your phone or your computer if you're not speaking. We'll be taking all roll calls by name and all votes, and without objection, we'll consider anyone making a motion or a second to be a yes vote. That'll make it a little bit more efficient. If you leave the meeting at any time, please announce your departure as well as when you return. These items must be recorded in the meeting minutes outlined by general statutes. Likewise, when you speak, please state your name and file a text or any other recorded communication from board members during the meeting, even on personal cell phones or other texts that might be there. It needs to be public records to the extent that they are regarding the business of the meeting. Now, Mr. Secretary will do a roll call. All right? So for the teasers board, Dale Falwell, Barbara Gibson.
Here.
Catherine Truitt.
Here.
Dirk German.
Here.
Greg Patterson. Greg Patterson? I don't hear Greg. Jeffrey Winston. John Ebichhausen.
Present.
Joshua Smith.
Here.
Thank you. Lent Brewer. Lent Brewer? I don't hear Lent. Linda Gunter? Is that you, Linda? Margaret Reader?
Here.
And Oliver Hawley?
Here.
Oh, sorry, Bernie Gammon.
Here.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for joining us. Patty's listening in, is that correct? Patty is. Patty? Go ahead.
I believe I heard my name mentioned, Jeff Morse.
We got to the elders' role. Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I didn't. Okay, thank you.
Patty, if you'll reach out, make sure that Greg and Lent and Linda Gunter, for calls of you serving till replaced on this board, all of our boards are a little bit different, to make sure they're aware of the board meeting. Patty, if you would mind doing that. Thank you. All right, we have a call? We do. Okay. That was for the teasers board. And elders' board, we'll start with Jeff.
Sorry about that.
I believe, though, Greg Patterson wasn't going to make it, and Linda Gunter may be a little bit late, and then Lent should be on. But, all right, elders' board, Jeffrey Morris.
Here.
Dale Falwell. Alan Wontzy.
Here.
Brenda Howerton.
Here.
Catherine Truitt.
Here.
Lee Atkinson.
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
Greg Patterson?
I know.
Over here.
Here.
Kevin Gordon?
Here.
Thank you.
Lent Brewer? Melanie Brady?
Here.
Tony Brown?
Here.
And Bernie Gammon?
Here.
Our ethics and awareness and identification of conflicts or potential conflicts of interest, teasers and elders' board members, you have the agenda that's been presented to you. Does anyone present have an actual potential or appearance of a conflict of interest regarding matters that are before you? Okay. Hearing none, we'll proceed to the approval of the meeting minutes, and we'll start with our teasers board. Do I hear a motion? Make a motion. Oliver Hawley. Thank you. Superintendent, Doctor. Second.
Oh, I thought it was like everyone calling.
We have motion second.
Oh, I'm going to escalate. Okay, I'm going to escalate that immediately then and be like, I answered this.
Could you please mute Barbara? Catherine Truitt?
It's not, it's not me.
No?
Yeah. Well, the reason I answered it is because I, the previous day, had screenshotted the directions of updating iOS on Orbit, and I got a notice that was like, you can.
Hello, if you are talking on the phone, we can hear you.
So we have a motion by Oliver Hawley and second by John Ebichhausen. Treasurer Falwell?
Aye.
Barbara Gibson?
Aye.
Catherine Truitt?
Aye.
Dirk German?
Aye.
Jeffrey Winston?
Aye.
Joshua Smith?
Aye.
Lent Brewer? Linda Gunter? Margaret Reader?
Aye.
And Bernie Gammon? Thank you. Members, the motion to approve the minutes has passed. Now, I would like a similar motion for the elders' board. Any other minutes? Take a motion. Second.
Three actions, second.
We'll get you next time, Sheriff. We have a motion second. Do you prefer the discussion? Let's recall the board. Dale Falwell?
Aye.
Alan Wontzy?
Aye.
Brenda Howerton?
Aye.
Catherine Truitt?
Aye.
Lee Atkinson?
Aye.
Jeffrey Morse?
Aye.
Aye.
Kevin Gordon?
Aye.
Lent Brewer? Melanie Brady?
Aye.
Tony Brown?
Aye.
Bernie Gammon? Thank you, board members. Before we proceed to our update, I want to let you know that we'll be adjourning our meeting today in honor of Deputy Ryan Hayworth, who was 23 years old and killed a lot of duty in Raleigh, North Carolina recently, and also Sheriff Dickens, who passed away. Thank you. You're now good, our lead slave update.
Thanks, Sam Watts, Representative, Department of State Treasurer. Appreciate the chance to help with you. Would like to update you on a couple things legislatively and then discuss a resolution that's in your packet that you're asking you to approve, similarly to the way that all the other major boards of the department have approved unanimously. But first, state budget. The well-publicized, but the Senate and the House have a conference budget that they have shared with the governor, and they have not shared that publicly, and they're negotiating arrangements. Speaker's very optimistic this week, saying they can have a deal in a few days, but has been echoed by the pro temp, by the governor's office, of that timetable. So we're watching very carefully, particularly for the retirement system, because we crossed the October 1 threshold, there are a number of administrative challenges that will occur regarding taking retirement contributions out of any potential pay raise or pools. The retirement system has worked carefully with the controller's office and the state budget's office, developed sort of a Band-Aid, but across January 1, we had to come up with a new Band-Aid. So they're working carefully on that. The health plan has some other issues, but probably more dire after November 1 and then again, January 1, for getting the contributions and premiums correct for both plans. However, we do think that the budget bill has the correct funding for the retirement system. There's no controversy over actually letting go of the employer contribution rates, which is a risk that you updated earlier. And there were benefit, new benefits added, these are supplemental calls, the general assembly insurance, they were funded with increased employer contribution rates. We had a lot of success this year with policy bills in General Assembly. We had 19 bills from the Department of State that were enacted, thanks to the cooperation and collaboration with the members of the legislature. A number of those affected retirement, I think the two most significant policy bills were Part II of what we reported to this board as the service purchase rewrite, where since 1941, there have been around 88 provisions put in to allow people to purchase service into the retirement system. And we set out on a three-part tour to rewrite those and to standardize them so we had the same formula and the same rules as much as possible applied to all of those purchases, to simplify, but also to use the best formula that was advantageous for the retirement system to maintain its fiscal stability going forward and to reduce the liability that the system, the state, and most governments have for, is unknown liability if someone takes advantage of those purchases. So we had Part II of that came through this year with the help of Representative Valen Neal, the pension chair, the federal campaign force, but also Representative Carson Smith, a former member of the elders' board. I'll just get that through. Another former member of the elders' board, Jim Bergen, led the charge on, Senator Jim Bergen, Department of County, led the charge on the major policy bill on contribution-based visit cap and pension spending laws. As of earlier this year, we were up to 30 cases active in litigation with the retirement system between us and school systems. So Senator Bergen successfully negotiated a one-year pause litigation, made some changes that we hope will reduce the friction between school boards and the retirement system, and we have a working group that's in the process of defining issues that we can work through in collaboration with the School Board Association, who is a full partner with us, Senator Bergen, attempting to reduce future incidents of lawsuits between our agencies. So we look forward to that. Now, if there's no questions on the policy bills or if no one else has heard of one once, you want to ask about, I'd like to move on to the budget resolution. So we don't believe that you're Tony Hommer, I can hear you too, because of the air conditions over there. Are you guys okay with me on here? Just a minute. The, I apologize for having to ask you to do this. There was a budget provision drafted by the Chair of the General Government Subcommittee, Proposition Subcommittee, which oversees our agency for administrative purposes, administrating part of our budget. Full appropriations shares, budget pensions fund, and budget health plan, but as far as the administration of the department, it's the General Government Subcommittee. The chairman became intent, probably within the last year or so, perhaps, we started trying to work with him 10, 12 months ago, to help them understand that the retirement system, the supplemental retirement plans, and the health plan, and the SCS fund function differently than many agencies in the state government, because we hold funds that belong to participants, members, or citizens, and those are fiduciary funds. But the chairman wanted to take the budget, put it back into the state budget so that the General Government Subcommittee could exercise additional control over that. That's problematic for a number of reasons, because you're not supposed, when you interpose yourself between a fiduciary and the owner of the funds, which is fiduciary, you become the fiduciary. So it does set the apple cart in terms of who's responsible for managing those funds. In fact, our counterpart retirement system in Mexico recently won litigation with their state over a very similar provision. And we've attempted to explain it to the Chair and to folks around here who are very interested in the topic. We had external counsel from the Investment Division, internal counsel from the Investment Division, we met with the staff eight, nine times on the topic, provided lots of feedback, but the Chair was intent on running. So he included the amendment in his subcommittee report. His own subcommittee amended it out. Next day, he included that amendment in, or attempted to put that in the full budget the next day, and he lost in appropriations committee vote on a 3327. The next day, he tried to amend it into the budget on the floor of the House and lost on an overwhelming voice vote. I will say that we really appreciate the efforts of State Foes Association for backing in the audience, who helped us with that voice vote, helped members understand what is the problem that is for the retirement system to come between the fiduciary and the owners of the funds. So he also tried the next day, because he didn't get a roll call vote. He tried to get a roll call vote, then when they were negotiating the conference budget, they attempted again to insert it, even though it wasn't in either version of the budget. It was out of the Senate version, it was removed from the House version, they attempted to put in the conference report. And so it was, we believe it's not currently in the budget, but we think the Chair may try again, and so we've asked all the affected boards in the department to, who are all bipartisan appointments, including folks who directly work with the governor's office, to pass the resolution. We've shared the initial result of that. You guys are the last two boards that get a chance to do this, so we would ask for your share of the resolution in order to make it very clear to the Chair and other members of General Assembly that this is significant difficulty. Have any extra questions on the amendment, do you think, and trust that you've read the resolution?
I would say, Chairman Falwell, if I may, reading it, kind of following what's going on in other states, and I don't know if it's appropriate at this time, but if it is, I believe it is imperative for us to do the best thing we can with our retirees in the state and keep it set how it is so that we have that separation. So if it is appropriate, I make a motion that the board have a discussion, that we accept the resolutions of remain how we are with the fiduciary staying with the treasurer's office.
I'll accept that motion in a second, then we'll go to discussion. Jennifer, second. Let me just say that the way that we do this is the way that Edward Gill did it, Harold Bowles did it, Commissioner Ford did it, Director Cowell did it. We've changed here. It's somebody that's kind of changed what's been the budgetary practice for the last half century. So as Sam started to say, as he started, as he did say it was a start, we apologize for having to bring this to us, but we brought this to every board and unanimously, by gender, by political party, whether it's appointee from the governor or the speaker or the president pro temp, these resolutions and patchy nams. So we have a motion second. Any further discussion?
I think if I read this properly, it goes, really, OSBM management under the General Assembly. Was OSBM going to stand up a board to manage it? If so, I didn't see any language in that. What does that do to this board?
We're not certain that we can follow what the amendment said. We're not certain that under federal law, we can actually follow it, and very likely it would set up a separation of powers lawsuit. It could be Falwell versus the General Assembly. We have no intent of doing or no intention or desire to do, but we would have to protect the retirees in the interest of the retirees. Once our authority is given to the treasurer, it's the treasurer's responsibility to defend that and protect it. So this would intersperse the ability for the General Assembly to say, particularly on the investment side, that once you've entered into a contract, you pay O of D to an investment house, the General Assembly could overrule that. They could say, we don't think you have a good deal there, so we're not going to do it. So it would immediately increase the cost of entering into investment contracts, because the people we would contract with would have to price in the risk that they would become politically out of favor with the General Assembly and would not be able to collect the fee that they've negotiated with us. As for this board directly, you would, it wouldn't pull power from you, but it would certainly change how we have to, your fiduciary over the assets of the, over the liabilities of the system generally, and we didn't touch that directly, getting with mango chaos on the investment side of the house most likely, which is where we also have to. I guess you would also have to price in the possibility that the General Assembly would overrule those, increase costs of investments, which would make the.
It's also just, I said it's fine, get into detail sometime.
Okay. We have a motion second. I'm going to see if there's any further discussion. Hearing none, the clerk called a roll. The teasers board. Dale Falwell?
Aye.
Barbara Gibson?
I believe I need to abstain on that one. I'm in the General Government Committee as well. For a conference.
Thank you. Catherine Truitt?
Aye.
Dirk German?
Aye.
John Ebichhausen?
Aye.
Joshua Smith?
Aye.
Lent Brewer? Linda Gunter? I still don't hear Lent or Linda. Margaret Reader?
Aye.
And Bernie Gammon? Thank you all. Like motion from the elders' board.
Attorney, Tony Brown here in discussion from the state, the teacher's side. I'll echo to support and make that motion. Bernie Gammon, second.
Mr. Brown's motion, Mr. Gammon, second. Do you prefer the discussion? Hearing none, the clerk called a roll. Dale Falwell?
Aye.
Alan Wontzy?
Aye.
Brenda Howerton?
Aye.
Aye.
Catherine Truitt?
Aye.
Lee Atkinson?
Aye.
Over here, man?
Aye.
Jeffrey Morse?
Aye.
Kevin Gordon?
Aye.
Lent Brewer?
Aye.
Melanie Brady?
Aye.
Catherine Truitt?
Aye.
Lee Atkinson?
Aye.
Over here, man?
Aye.
Jeffrey Morse?
Aye.
Kevin Gordon?
Aye.
Lent Brewer?
Aye.
Melanie Brady?
Aye.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Sheriff. Next, I'm going to hand the gavel over to the secretaries for about six minutes, and we'll have Rick Lopez, Nikki Roberts, Patrick come up for our operations compliance updates.
All right, everyone? Quick update on what's going on in operations with the retirement processing, benefit processing, payroll processing, specialty plan sections. For retirement processing, we had 1,142 retirements set in this year, most likely from September of 2020, but with only modest, so average days to process those retirement requests and send out retirement elections for them, actually improved from 2021 to 2020, dropped to 14.8 days. That's a really quick turnaround time, that's without any overtime, that's folks working, ready to be carefully staffed, no temporaries, so really good job, small groups there processing retirements. One of the bright spots in the retirement processing is we actually had 25% of those requesting retirement supply online in September of 2021. September 2020 was 38%. So significant increase, without any advertisement, no marketing. Really pleased to see it going in that direction, it just really helps people who want to retire helps us, but more importantly, it's easy to follow and people are picking up on it and recognize that it's easy to use and the word's getting around, so we're real happy with that. For debt processing, we had 1,176 reported debts in September of this year, and that was up from 1,136 in 2020. We had 1,263 deaths reported in January of 2021, which we think is the highest amount of deaths reported in a month ever, since we can keep track. Three of the highest reported debt months came in the last 12 months. That totaled over a 12-month period from September of 2020 to September 2021 to 13,423 deaths reported. On our average days, the close debt workflow in September 2021 was 28.2. Our goal is 45 days, so we're still exceeding that goal. Obviously, very sad that we see the increase in deaths, but we're really working hard to process those as quickly as possible and get those beneficiaries saying, we understand the criticality of that and sensitivity, and we're just really trying to stay on top of that. We have been working some overtime. We had a couple of folks that dropped off. We had one that had to actually leave the country, lost his father, and he was obligated to his mother, and he moved out of the country, so he left. So we've been down a couple of people, so we're still managing to get that processing time, and we're real pleased with the turnaround time. For disability processing, we had 298 disability applications in for September 2021, and we had 24.3 days from the time the application was received until the decision was reached. And so we're committing that target turnaround time, our goal was 25 days, so we're doing well with that. Refunds processing, September 2021, we had 1,469 refund requests. Average days to prepare those for payment was only 8.4 days. Got cross-trained the entirety of disability, so we've got all hands on deck with those refunds, and we're turning those as quickly as possible. Payroll processing, September of 2021, monthly payroll was 568.2 million, and we paid 343,874 people. Continue to climb, we've done that payroll rewrite, I spoke to you about last time, and because we've optimized our system, those run times have significantly improved, and we're much better prepared to handle any increased volume going forward. Specialty plans, something that Mr. Gordon and I have been working on with the Firefighter Association, did a really poor job initially on outreach to our fire departments to sign up these guys for the online reporting. So we did hire someone as a temporary for outreach dedicated solely to outreach with this group, had 1,117 fire departments, and of those, we've outreach to. and we're much better prepared to handle any increased volume going forward. Uh, with specialty plans, something that, uh, Mr. Gordon and I have been working on with the firefighter association, did a really poor job initially on, uh, outreach to our fire departments, um, to sign up the, the guys for the online report. So we did hire someone as a temporary for outreach dedicated solely to outreach with this group, had eleven hundred seventeen fire departments. And of those, we've, uh, we've outreach to, to about a thousand now. And, uh, we've, uh, we're glad to, we still have some work to do. We've got, uh, signed up so far, two hundred eighty-seven. Uh, we've got some non-responsive. We'll need to wrap back around on six hundred sixteen so far that haven't responded, but we'll keep out and then we'll, we'll, uh, hopefully be able to increase that lineup percentage. And our next outreach will be, uh, focused with the, uh, rescue departments. Working with Joel on that and, um, I think our manager of that group, David Starr, we spoke with him and we intend to get a list from him and do the same as we did, uh, with that. For orbit self-service, over the last twelve months from September twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, we had almost five million retirement deaths. That might be one person multiple times going out there, that's not individuals. Uh, but as, as you can see now, uh, with the slide, quite a few hits on, on the retirement estimate, uh, we provided three hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-five annual benefit statements this year. And there were, uh, fifty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-three direct deposit transactions, uh, that were made. That means, uh, retirees exchange their banking information or set it up with retirement. That's quite a bit less paperwork required to process that's effective immediately. We've got a top date stamp on it. We've authenticated the identity with self-service, so real pleased with, uh, how that's going for us. That's all I have. Questions?
This is Barbara Gibson. Um, thank you for that report. That was very helpful. I'm just curious, you said it was the highest number of deaths. Do you know what the number was the previous year or what the even, or what the highest number of deaths previously reported?
I don't have that offhand, Barbara, but I, I can, I can certainly get that to you if you'd like me to. I can do a little research and email that to you.
I would love both of those numbers if you don't mind.
Uh, this is Tom Caudia. If I'm recalling correctly, we hadn't had over a thousand deaths ever until, was it until?
Last January.
Till, till the past year. So, um, I'll try to get you the exact number, Barbara.
Okay, thank you. That's you.
Any other questions, Truitt?
All right, turn it over to Vicky.
All right. I'm going to make this a short, uh, summary since you have a really long meeting today with lots of important decisions. And I know Patrick's excited because he actually wears his stuff. All right, so our first slide is, um, you'll see the production for our correspondence coming through the retirement systems division. The left of this graph represents how many and the right represents timing and days. And looking at the quarter, which is July through September, we've received more than fifteen thousand pieces of mail and we've answered them within a turnaround time of less than six days. Moving to the next slide, you will see, uh, it gives you a snapshot of our retirement education meeting that has been held so far this fiscal year, again, July through September, and it includes employer training sessions and retirement planning conferences. So far this year, we've reached twenty-seven hundred people, um, in just three months. Now, of course, you'll get to hear about October next quarter. I'll give you a little bit on that, uh, now, but you'll hear more next month, or next quarter. So this month, of course, is our National Securities Month, National Retirement Securities Month, and we partnered with Social Security and Prudential Art Design Contribution Partners, so several of, uh, several of these events that educate and bring retirement awareness to our members. And our communications team's also done a great job with social media campaigns this year. And, um, we actually have real members giving advice about retirement with successes down to bring it to life. And they responded in a big way. We reached over sixty-five hundred members in October, and that's a fifty-one percent increase. And people reached through social media and were up seventy-eight percent on follow-up discussions or post-engagement meetings in regards to that. Now, again, that wasn't just us. Uh, we were involved with about fifteen hundred of those, but as a partner with the others, we reached sixty-five hundred. And again, I'll tell you more about that in the next, um, meeting. The next slide shows our scheduled one-on-one retirement counseling appointments. The number on the left of the graph shows how many, um, were counseled and then double horizontal lines going across represents, uh, how many appointments were actually held each month, the red bars. So overall, we had a total of eight hundred and fifty-one, which is about two hundred and eighty-four appointment, appointments on average per month. And those were all virtual. The next slide represents our monthly email production. The left of the graph shows the number of emails received and the right shows the turnaround time to respond to those emails in days. You'll see from this table, we received over fourteen thousand in the quarter, which is about forty-seven hundred a month and two hundred and forty a day. And, uh, we were able to turn those around on an average of two days. That's through September. This month is a different story. All right. And then, uh, the next slide shows our call center's average speed of answer. On the left, you'll see the time represented in minutes and seconds. And if you add up the average speed of answer for the quarter, you'll see their average time to answer a call was about nine minutes. And these stats clearly show, uh, an area of struggle for us that we're working very hard on. Like most businesses in North Carolina, we're faced with the staffing practices as well at a time when our members need us the most. So we're not happy about that, but we're working really hard to be able to address them as quickly as we can. We're doing different things on social media, of course. We also have questions and answers. We're making videos. We're trying to do everything we can and answer those questions as quickly as we can. We're updating our voice response system. Everything we can do. And the last slide that I'll go over, uh, shows incoming and abandoned calls. On the left, you see the number received and on the right are the number of callers who hung up before they could, before we could assist them. And if you add up the calls from July through September, you'll see that we received about sixty-eight thousand. If you average that out, uh, how many we abandoned, you'll see that unfortunately we've abandoned twenty-four percent of them. And again, we're not happy with these results. They are what they are. We are spending a lot of time recruiting right now so that we can get the staff needed. Not only are we, uh, short-staffed, but the questions people are calling in to ask, of course, they're life, they're making life decisions, uh, but it's just changed. Our, our, our talk time has gotten longer. People are trying to make decisions more than ever before. They're asking lots of questions and the counselors that we have here really care, so they're taking the time. Even though we have sometimes a hundred calls holding, um, our counselors want to give them thorough answers. That's what they're trained to do and that's what they have a heart to do. So we're trying the best we can. It should get better, hopefully, but right now, that's, that's our biggest, that's our biggest struggle. So that's really all that I have. Unless you guys have questions, I'll be happy to answer anything.
I have one question. Mark, Chris Reader. Um, with our calls, do we have an option of leaving our phone number and the retirement system calling us back or the?
We have the option called callback assist, which tells you that if you would like us to call you back when you're next in line, we can call you back. We also have email correspondence. Right now, this month, it's taking about five days to get that email, but we don't have a voicemail. We would spend all of our, we tried that one year and we had staff here until like seven o'clock trying to just answer all the voicemails that we had. So not only is October, uh, retirement security month and we're reaching more people, which makes them want to follow up afterwards, but it's also our open enrollment time right now and we're getting close to the end. So in the next few days, it's going to get worse before it gets better. Especially for our retirees, they like calling us. We did provide instructions on, we've partnered with State Health Plan, we provide an instruction on how they could enroll, uh, but they like calling us for, for help with self-service and we like helping them. We just don't have an ambition to address all the questions.
But, uh, callback assist is, is an awesome way to, because you still keep your place in line, we'll call you, and so it is a great option.
And that's what I was asking, the callback assist. Can we take that?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Just a follow-up. I thought we were. You initially don't, won't call back assist, then you get four minutes into the call and then you do, won't call back assist. Can you do that? So let's say you want to hold. Five minutes into your hold, you say, you know, I gotta go, I gotta do something else. Tell us how that, you expect that to happen. We are, we're not doing it currently, but we're trying to do it.
Absolutely. We have a new platform that's going to have all kinds of great features. That's one of them to where we can have messaging on hold. We can have it offered three minutes in, five minutes, five minutes in. Uh, right now, that new platform is, uh, being implemented by the Department of Information Technology for North Carolina and right after that, we're one of the next groups, one of the first groups other than them to implement it. So we're looking realistically, probably in the next year. You know, I wish I could say next month, but if I did, I would just be telling you blowing air for sure.
Okay. That new, the new DIT platform also offers, um, a chat feature that
Oh.
I'm sure the group will likely explore as well, um, depending on staffing. But that's something that, uh, other agencies utilize that, uh, is an option for us to.
That might be even longer than the year down the road. You don't expect a person.
Any other questions? Let me, uh, let me add that, and I know it's been a concern, uh, for members of our board and people who are presenting this report to you. As you've heard me say numerous times, people don't call us to book a cruise. They call us because they've had a life-changing event. That's the only reason they call us. Most of these events are blessings, some are not. But that's the only reason they call us. Got married, uh, had children, children aged out, the state health plan, all the, they retired. So the only reason they call us is, uh, they have a life-changing event. We take that very seriously. You've heard me talk about the employment crisis in North Carolina, the fact that the biggest business in the state is the state. Second are the school systems, the third are the counties, and the fourth are the cities. And, uh, this employment crisis that's afflicting our state right now is, is impacting all levels of government, the state and local level in its ability to provide essential services. There's nowhere that that's more acute right now than I believe in our call center. If you just, this is not just, my mother was a switchboard operator. You know, you would call in, ask for Dr. Pennell and that was it. This is so much different than that. These people have to really be subject matter experts because once again, the only reason they're calling our office is because they've had a life-changing event. If you want somebody to know that they're alive, who's a subject matter expert because of seriousness of why you're calling us. So we're trying to take all this into account. We are looking at every possibility as far as how to actually solve this problem. I don't say this in a discouraging or disparaging way, but, uh, we are dealing, even before COVID, with a different mindset possibly regarding, regarding the younger generation what these jobs are, what they mean, and how long they stick with them. We invest in these individuals for six to eight weeks, just in the very beginning, to get them up to speed so they can even answer the phone. And that's just the start of the training. Because, once again, people need to be able to rely on us for information. We give them incorrect information and they rely on that, then things go the wrong direction, then we end up in OAH. And then there's other issues. That's why getting it right, keeping it right at the call center level, from a quality standpoint, is so vitally important to me and to this team. This is National Developmental Disabilities Employment Awareness Month. And whether it's, uh, veterans or people who in the military who may like to have a second job, or people with developmental disabilities who may have, uh, a real interest in doing this kind of work. Ted Brand, who I've not introduced, Chief of Staff, this is, uh, something that he has brought to our attention. We are, we're going wherever we need to go to get these people, but hiring temporary people and training them up and then them not being here is just, we, we got to get out of that board tax. And it's going to be a little bit painful, but I just want the board to know that, that it's a serious business to us and it's very serious to these people who are presenting to you. Anything else? We do get a lot of positive feedback. We have people write me notes, write them notes, post on our social media. Fast thought they were about the quality and the timing and the flightness of their service process. Obviously, share those with the specific call center people, uh, but also, we also try to post those on, in addition to that. Now for the actuarial joy. Let's take three hours of it. Troy, come up. Let the games begin.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, Patrick Tinlaw, Director of Policy Planning and Compliance for the Retirement Systems, and I'm a staff actuary. Um, our, our team over in policy planning and compliance works to ensure the financial integrity in the long-term health of the retirement systems. And since this is the last regular board meeting of twenty twenty-one, I just wanted to note that we have a really good reason to celebrate the focus that we've had on long-term sustainability. You may have done a little math in your head when Sam was talking earlier, uh, the retirement system's turned eighty years old this year. The state, uh, retirement system began operating in July of nineteen forty-one with thirty-six thousand employees covered and the average salary was one thousand dollars a year.
Wow.
What was that? Thirty-six thousand employees and the average salary was one thousand dollars a year.
What is it now? Oh, you're going to retell.
Barry will get ready to talk about that. The fact that the systems have survived and thrived the way they have for eighty years is, is a reflection on legislatures and these boards and all of their predecessors and retirees and employees and employers all working together with a focus on the health of the systems. And, uh, that's something that you should all be proud of. So in honor of the, uh, big birthday, I'll be talking a little bit longer than normal this morning, but I won't be singing.
We're going to sing to Oliver Halle later because it just worked out too. He's not eighty then.
Just like to make a personal observation, I believe that this year, twenty twenty-one, will go down as a banner year in terms of the work that the boards have done to, um, to really put the focus on long-term health of the systems into practice. Just as a real quick review, in January, you adopted the results of the once every five years actuarial experience study. That involved a difficult decision that you had to make to reduce the assumed rate of return from seven percent to six and a half percent per year. And you did that knowing that, uh, that it was, uh, going to increase employer costs compared to if you didn't make the decision, but that it was reflective of real market conditions and a better, more accurate measurement of liabilities. At the same meeting, you made, uh, decisions about employer contribution rates and recommendations to the legislature this year that we're in now. In April, you, uh, adopted, uh, version two of your, uh, what we call ECRIS, uh, contribution rate stabilization policies for the state and local systems, which are very important because they express the board's intention for how the benefits that have already been promised will be paid for, uh, in the next few years. And they express the board's intention about how any benefits that would be new benefits would be funded in the next few years. Again, uh, very important document that, uh, the boards deliberated and voted on. Today, you'll be hearing, uh, a number of actuarial reports from Kavanaugh McDonald. Wendy Ludbrook and Larry Langer behind me are here to present those from Kavanaugh McDonald Consulting. And, uh, you'll discuss those reports and prepare for decisions that you'll be making this coming January about employer contribution rates and recommendations to the legislature. So it's been a very busy, very consequential year, uh, but the decisions you made have, even though they've been difficult at times. though they've been difficult at times, they've been made with the best available facts and with a clear view of what the conditions really are in these funds. So on behalf of staff, we really appreciate the engagement that all of you have shown, good questions and discussion, and your judgment and vigilance trying to protect these retirement systems. And we think that vigilance will continue to be called for in the future. Before getting into just the two slides I have today, I wanted to share a few thoughts on one specific aspect of what Kavanaugh McDonald will be presenting later. Just yesterday, we received a series of questions from a board member about one aspect of Kavanaugh McDonald's reports having to do with investment gains, which is term of art and actuarial reports that were recognized in 2020. And specifically, they had to do with, there may be questions that some of you may have as well. They had to do with the investment gains that were recognized in 2020. Could those be used to provide new benefits? Or do they need to be used to pay for benefits that have already been promised? And sort of a few variations on those questions. So with your understanding, I'd like to just take a little time to go through those six questions that we received and my thoughts on them as a staff actuary. The six questions, I won't hold you in suspense. What they were, were, number one, and I'll paraphrase a little bit, but number one, can the investment gains be used to pay for new benefits? Number two, how much do, how much would new benefits cost? So for instance, colas for retirees, let's say a 1% permanent cola for retirees, how much would it cost? Number three, what would these types of benefits, new benefits, how would they impact the unfunded liabilities of the system? Number four, what are the sort of statutory or policy considerations for investment gains being used to pay for these new benefits? And number five and number six were about history of the retirement systems, and when investment gains have been used in the past to pay for new benefits, how has that worked in terms of employer contribution rates? Yeah, that was question number five, and unfunded liabilities, that was question number six. So like to just walk through each of those briefly. The first question may be the most important one, which is, can the investment gains be used to pay for new benefits? So this is a real important question to understand, and it's important to understand what the actuaries are saying and what they're not saying in their evaluation reports. When they say, they will report that there were actuarial investment gains of $1.3 billion in the state system during 2020, and about half a billion dollars in the local system during 2020. And what they mean when they say that is that there's a measurement of the assets to pay benefits that is called the actuarial value of assets, and that grew during 2020 by more than the expected amount. It grew by, by $1.3 billion more than the expected growth in 2020 for the state system, and half a billion for the local system. The actuaries are also reporting that there's a measure of the liabilities owed by the retirement systems based on benefits that have already been earned by people based on their past service, whether those people are retired or employees right now. And that that measure of the liabilities owed by the systems grew during 2020 by more than the assets grew. So as a result, the unfunded liabilities of the systems grew during 2020. What the actuaries are not saying when they report a $1.3 billion investment gain is that they are not saying the investments grew by enough to cover all the benefits we've ever promised plus $1.3 billion. So that's important to understand.
Patrick, can I interrupt you?
Yes.
The reason that the liabilities, lots of reasons, but the reason the liabilities grow, one, two main reasons that the liabilities grow is that people retire earlier than we ever, that we anticipated, and they're living longer than we anticipated. Those, those are two big factors of why a liability would grow.
Mr. Chair, over the long, over the long term, those are two big factors. The, the main reasons that came into play this past year were, first of all, benefits that people earn for working during the year. That's just something that always happens, that grows the liability. Interest on the liability, as people get closer to retiring, and the benefit is worth more in a present value terminology. And then thirdly, in this particular year, the change to the assumed rate of return resulted in the discounted present value of the liabilities being higher. So all of those things were the main factors. And Wendy and Larry can add any others that I can introduce.
Okay, thank you.
So, but there are two things that are both true in these reports. Number one, investments grew by more than expected during the year. But number two, there are still unfunded liabilities that, in fact, that grew during the year to the tune of, the unfunded liability of the state system is $12 billion as of the end of 2020, and the unfunded liability of the local system is $4 billion as of the end of 2020. New benefits that, like, let's say, for instance, increases to the pension formula, or supplements, or colas paid to retirees, those are new benefits that have not been promised yet funded, budgeted, or taken into account by the actuaries at all. The actuary evaluations reports are clear that they're based on benefits that have already been promised, current benefits. So because we would be talking about new benefits, they have a cost associated with them. And the state and local board policies, the ECRIS, both say that new costs like that would need to be recognized through increased employer contributions. And again, in a minute, to some reasons why that is a prudent policy, but for now, I'll just leave it there that that is what the policy is saying. But the investment gains, I just want to be clear about one thing. The investment gains that happened during 2020 have already been counted when the actuaries say that the unfunded liabilities were 12 billion to 4 billion. They're already being used to help the numbers to get to 12 billion and 4 billion. So the second question, brief for answering. How much would, how much would, let's say, a 1% permanent cola cost? These are numbers in the valuation reports, but to be very brief about it, Kavanaugh McDonald's reports say that for the state system, if there was a 1% permanent cola for retirees, and the choice was to pay for that over a 12-year period, it would require contributions to increase by the, in the state system by 0.42% of pay, which in terms of dollars is $70 million per year from the state for 12 years, and 47 million of that would be from the general fund. In the local system, the contributions would increase by 0.31% of pay, which equates to $23 million per year from local government employers for 12 years.
So the, the plan together, teasers and elders together, 1%, it's about $100 million a year occurring.
1% for both of them together would be about $93 million per year for 12 years. The third question was along the lines of, well, what do, what do these types of benefits do to increase unfunded liabilities? And it was also referencing one thing that's in the valuation reports, which is that according to Kavanaugh McDonald's sort of, what you call central or baseline projection, the unfunded liabilities for both systems would be addressed by the end of 2026. So that's good, we're on a good plan. But we would just put in a word of caution, I would put in a word of caution, that those projections are based on all the assumptions being met, including, you know, the systems earning 6.5% return in each and every year. In the same reports, Kavanaugh McDonald shows that if we just had one year of 0% investment returns, which could easily happen, there's many years of negative returns or very negative returns, but one year of 0% could easily happen, that that would delay the time period for taking care of the unfunded liability by four or five years. And in fact, they're also showing that, they, they did this for the state system, said if the state system achieved 5.5% return every year instead of 6.5, so just missed the mark by 1% every year, the unfunded liability would never be eliminated under current assumptions. So there is a real risk of that unfunded liability always being there. In terms of what the cost of new benefits would mean for unfunded liabilities, it's pretty straightforward. To take the state system, for example, if the $1.3 billion of investment gains were used to provide new benefits, then the unfunded liability would go from 12 billion to more than 13 billion, because 1.3 isn't going to be used to help the unfunded liability anymore, it'd be used for new benefits instead. And similarly, on the local side, the unfunded liability right now is 4 billion, and if it were used for, if the half a billion that we're seeing in investment gains in 2020 were used for new benefits, it would increase that to 4.5 billion. Third question. I might just pause there for a minute, see if there's any.
Yeah, I've got a question. So in 2020, if I'm understanding correctly, the investment gains were 1.3 billion. Do we have any numbers for 2021 as far as investment gains?
Technically, the way this works for the actuarial reports is we wait until after December 31st and see what they've done. I don't know if anyone here may have numbers that they know, unaudited, unreleased numbers or something, but I don't know any up-to-date numbers on returns during 2021.
We're about, year to date, we're up about 6.8%.
So the actuaries measure this only on December 31st every year, so we kind of wait to see what we're, yeah. Okay. So moving along, a couple other really important questions. Question number four was sort of a policy and statutory consideration. So to be clear here for the state board, we believe we're talking about recommendations that the board would make to the General Assembly in January, not actual implementation of a cola by the board. On the local side, the, the board does have delegated authority to grant colas and to decide on contribution rates within limited delegated authority. So the main, the main policy reason that investment gains would not be used for new benefits is the board's ECRIS. And these were policies that, again, were adopted in April of this year. The state ECRIS is a two-page document, it was adopted in April, and it says four times within its two pages that benefit changes and benefit improvements, colas, cola supplements, things of that nature, are, the board's intent is to pay for, that those be paid for through increased employer contributions. And similarly, on the local side, the ECRIS says that benefit changes adjust the contribution rates for the first two years of a five-year policy. And for the years after that, in the local policy, benefit changes still need to be taken into account, but there could be other things happening that could actually cause the employer contribution rate to decrease rather than increase once we get to the third year. But in any event, the ECRIS are clear that the costs of new benefits are paid through increased contributions, and by doing that, they use the investment gains that occur toward the unfunded liability for already promised benefits. These portions of the ECRIS, I want to be really clear, they do not say that there can be no colas or no benefit changes. They only say that if there are, they should be paid for, recognized through employer contributions in the, in the environment we have where there's a unfunded liabilities. So while on this topic, I don't really want to just leave it as that's what the policy says, but I want to give you a few reasons why it's a prudent policy, that new benefits would be paid for by increased employer contributions. There's three reasons in short. One is that it makes sense when there's a significant unfunded liability. Two is that it's a positive signal about the state's financial commitments, and three is that it's coherent with the rest of everything the actuaries are doing. So I'll tell you a couple of sentences on both of those. First, the policy makes sense when there's a significant unfunded liability. We've talked about this already, up to date, $12 billion unfunded liability for the state system, $4 billion unfunded liability for the local system. And the main assurance that members, retirees, and active employees have that the unfunded liabilities will be addressed is the commitment of governing authorities to their policies. So that's one reason. A second reason is that the policies are important signals to the outside world about the state's financial commitments. So the General Assembly directed the boards to develop the ECRIS, so that's one big reason why they are developed. But the ECRIS are described in bond offering statements when the state issues debt, and they are described in our department's reports to the officials who prepare the state's annual financial reports. So the board policies may change from time to time, but they're part of the picture of the state's commitment to meeting its obligations that other people will look at. And then the third reason it's a prudent policy is that it's coherent with everything else the actuaries are doing, and I think this is an important one. The actuaries assume, based on the decisions made earlier this year, that the funds can achieve 6.5% investment return. And I will not put words in their mouth, but I think you all understood from previous meetings that the 6.5% investment return assumption was going to be challenging to meet. It's not a given. And that all the investment returns that come in, good or bad, in the future are expected to be needed to support the 6.5% assumption in this. I don't speak for the consulting actuaries, but I believe that, as an actuary myself, that if they had thought that the board would use investment gains to pay for new benefits, then the actuaries would have been right to add a liability for those new benefits, or to use a lower assumed rate of return than 6.5%. And either of those would have resulted in even higher employer contributions. So the bottom line of this, from an actuarial perspective, in my own opinion, is that adding new benefits when there is an unfunded liability is something that has to be paid for eventually through contributions one way or another. The last couple of questions I want to just answer about history, the brief, talking about situations in the past when new benefits have been provided and they've been funded by investment gains, what has been done about employer contributions, and what has been done to the unfunded liabilities? So in terms of employer contributions, there's been, actually, a lot of times in the past when benefits have been approved, either colas have been granted, or the formula for calculating the pension has been improved, or vesting has been relaxed, or retirement has been allowed at earlier ages, and that those things have been paid for by investment gains. That has happened in the past. There's also been a lot of cases, particularly in the, in more recent years, when improvements in benefits were funded by greater contributions, or not letting the contributions decrease as much as they otherwise would have, which is really the same thing, math. For the local board, the last time a cola was granted by the board was in 2016. Some of you may remember this, the percentage of a cola was 0.105% that was granted by the board. So for a person who had a pension of $20,000 a year on average, that would increase their pension by about $1.75 a month. And the board, in that decision process, felt that the contributions employers were making would be sufficient, whether or not they were adjusted for the 0.105% cola. So it's varied from time to time in terms of what has been done about employer contribution rates. A couple of things to bear in mind when we're thinking about the past, and how it's different from today. One big difference is that for most of the 80-year life of the retirement systems, you know, the rate of return that the boards assumed they could achieve and built into their actuary models were safe. They were less than the return on 30-year United States Treasury securities. I just looked up the year 1990, for instance. In 1990, the boards assumed they could receive 7.5% return, and the United States government was offering 8.5% annual yield on 30-year Treasury securities. So assuming you So, assuming you could achieve 7.5% return in that environment was safe, and it was not necessarily true that you would need all of your investment returns in the future to pay for benefits that you've already promised. So, it was different capitals at the time. Today, I will let you form a guess in your head as to what the United States government is offering on 30-year Treasuries in terms of the yield. And the answer is, kind of yesterday, 1.95% per year. The Boards are assuming they can earn 6.5% per year investment returns. That's a difference of 455 basis points, 4.55% per year, that the Board is counting on being able to earn to address liabilities for benefits that have already been promised. So, it's a different environment from where we were in the past. The other difference from the past that I just want to mention is that the systems did not have unfunded liabilities in the past like they have today. The State system, before the Great Financial Crisis of 2008, it had unfunded liabilities that went as great as $2 billion at times, and surpluses that went as great as $4.5 billion. That was the window over before the Great Financial Crisis. Today, we're talking about an unfunded liability of 12 billion. On the local system, it's a little bit more complicated, but before 2016, the actuaries didn't use a technique that transparently measured an unfunded liability. So, it always appeared that the local system was just about 100% funded, 99.9 or 99.8 or something, if you look at the reports. So, the local system did not have an unfunded liability that was transparently measured. Today, it does, and it's $4 billion. So, there's a lot of information, but that covers the six questions that were provided to us by a Board member yesterday, and I do have a couple of brief remarks on the slides, but I'll stop there for a minute.
Any questions? I just want to just quickly say three major points. Number one, we have to deal with what we have, with where we are. A lot of things probably should have been done over the last 80 years, and I've heard you say as before, I think we should have had a bifurcated system for the average state employee who makes a certain level of income versus those that make 250,000 bucks a year. I think we should have had different systems, but that's not what we have. Secondly, this reference to the hurdle, this is the chart you see me hold up before. So, when the blue line is above the red line, the blue line is government bond rates, the red line is the assumed rate of return, it's pretty easy to beat the State Treasurer, because you're earning more on government bonds than what the assumed rate of return is. That's not so difficult, but as you can see, this is, the blue line plummeted. Secondly, the comment that Patrick made about rating agencies and Boards adhering to its policies, he sort of said that quickly and softly, but that's a big deal. So therefore, when we set these policies, whether it's on the ECRIS for new benefits of any kind, it's important to note that people are making sure that this Board adheres to the policies. There could be a lot of tension about what the policy should be, but once the vote's taken, that we actually adhere to the policy. And the last thing is, and I want to be absolutely clear about this, everything you've heard over the last two minutes is not political or emotional. When Treasurer Bowles left this office in January 2001, this plan had every dollar it would ever need, and 10 cents on top of that dollar. It was 110% funded. But through no fault of, obviously, Treasurer Richard Moore, our country was attacked on 9/11, the stock market was closed for several days, the plan lost billions and billions of dollars in 9/11. And then all during Treasurer Moore's tenure, trying to get this funded plan up to where he inherited it, right at the end of his tenure, the beginning of Treasurer Cowell's tenure, obviously, we were hit with the Great Financial Crisis, and we lost tens of billions of more dollars. And it's a perverse thing to always say, but anytime you lose 25% on your money, you got to make 33% on your money just to get back even. And that's if money is not leaving for benefits every 30 days. So, all this is real, it's real stuff, and I appreciate, that was a fantastic explanation about the history. But just to hopefully bring some comfort to this Board, that the first part of his presentation of all the right things that we've tried to do, especially even in the last 12 months, to make sure that we preserve and strengthen and sustain this plan for the next generation of public service workers. A lot of public servants don't know this Board exists. They don't know there's a Treasurer. They don't know the Treasurer's in charge of that. I get blamed every day for why I haven't passed a budget. You know? I do care about the budget, because the three biggest expenses of the budget are things that come to the Treasurer's office, the pension contribution, bankruptcy compensation, interest, principal, and the debt. But that's not what is important. It's not important for 900,000 people to know that there's a Treasurer's office, or there's a Teasers' and Elders' Board, or they're not the Treasurer, Treasurer Cowell, or Treasurer Moore. What's important for us to know is who they are. That's what, that's, they're our customer. And I think that whether something was not properly calculated leading up to 2016, or there wasn't enough sunshine on the transparency of unfunded liabilities, whatever the case may be, I think this Board is fully committed to preserving, strengthening, and sustaining this plan for the next generation of public service workers who may not even be employed by the State or the local governments right now. So, either you're committed to that or you're not. And the last thing I'll say is that I appreciate you sharing and answering these questions, because this is another example of transparency. If somebody has great questions, it doesn't matter if we like the questions, it doesn't matter where the questions come from. If somebody's asking great questions that we think break value to this Board, we answer them. We're asked of them, and we answer them, and we share that with everybody. And I would say that, the last thing is that, when we talk about these subjects, there's going to be tension. When we talk about new benefits, there's going to be tension. There are people in here who have a job to do, and I have a great relationship with all of them. But they have a job to do, whether it's a new benefit or whatever it is, to try to make that happen. But there are a lot of people who aren't in this room, who are constantly tugging on me about why we even had this plan to start with. There are local governments, especially east of here and west of here, who are struggling, even before we had ever heard of COVID, to deal with what has happened to the legs and arms and toes and fingers of our state over the last 20 years, in terms of depopulating and lack of economic growth, who are struggling to make these pension contributions. There are promises made to the County Commissioner Association, the League of municipalities about, you know, this ECRIS, we're going to agree to this ECRIS, which, by the way, if you kind of remember that graph, it was like one of these. It wasn't one of these, it was sort of one of these. We're asking you to put your foot on the gas and fund these plans, so that we can get back over the wheel on top of this issue. And, you know, they're expecting that ECRIS to go away, you know, just two years from now, because that's what they told their members when they agreed to do all this. So, I don't want anybody on this Board to feel stressed about this. Is there pressure? Yes. But I just want to remind you, pressure is what's keeping you alive right now. Pressure is what drove you to this building. Air, oil, gas pressure, blood pressure. Pressure is not your enemy. Stress is your enemy. And I think as long as we can be as transparent and mathematical about these subjects, and as long as this Board can adhere to the policies it sets, I think that we can get to the right outcome. Does that mean everybody's going to be happy? No. It just means that that's what we're, that's our goal. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Chris. This is Alan Boensie. I did have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, so Alan Boensie from the Local Government's Board. So, Mr. Kenlaw, I'm just wondering, is there a way to do a COLA without increasing the employer contribution rates pursuant to the ECRIS policy?
Well, Mr. Boensie, under the Board's policy, the employer contribution rate for the next two years would be adjusted for the effect of whatever benefits are changed.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown, thank you. This is Treasurer Patrick. I'm trying to understand, I guess, I hear what you're saying, and definitely don't disagree with what you're saying, and I understand the process and what we have in place here. But I'm still trying to understand, I guess, the, what options do we truly have? If there's some way to do something, a temporary fix or a temporary adjustment for, even like a supplement, that does not involve a huge hit or hopefully no hit for the employer contribution? Help me understand, what options do we truly have? And I'm talking, even extreme options that are probably not viable options, but yet are something to be considered, though.
Right.
Educate me, that's, I guess that's what I'm asking, what options do we truly have to address, I guess, what everyone's not.
And you'll hear two answers, because there's a little bit of a disconnect between the Teasers' and the Elders' on those questions, so.
Okay. Well, I'll start with the local Board. So, the local Board has the authority under statute to provide a COLA within the amount of investment gains and inflation, no greater than, you know, the lesser of those two. Kavanaugh McDonald will share the specific numbers around that. Under the policy of the local Board, if it does that this year, it would be paid for through an increase to employer contributions. So, for instance, a 1% permanent COLA would be paid for by $23 million a year for 12 years. The statutory authority of the local Board is limited to permanent COLAs, not one-time supplements, as it is, as exists right now. There is a provision in the legislature, I believe it was in the House version of Senate Bill 311. Sam can tell me if that's.
That's correct. I'll take that sentence for you. An amendment was added to the Senate Bill that's related to retirement periods. It was not requested by a department, but we had provided technical assistance. We certainly didn't oppose it, because it simply gives the Elders' Board the same authority that the General Assembly has to choose between a permanent COLA or a one-time supplement. And I'll let Patrick mention, there's always, you can, instead of a 12-year amortization of something, you can do a one-year amortization of something as well, that's within the purview of the Board already on permanent COLAs, but that's effectively what you do with a one-time supplement. You amortize over one year instead of 12 years. So, if you were going to increase contribution rates, you would have a one-year bump to do that, under a supplement or under an amortization of a permanent COLA, but it's a lot more expensive for a one-year AM on a permanent COLA.
That's all correct. And the general thinking actuarially is that if there's a one-year, a one-time supplement that's paid, that that should be paid for over one year, but it is a less expensive, less expensive benefit. But just to be real clear before moving over to the State, the local ECRIS and the State ECRIS, neither one of them says there can be no COLAs. What they say is that if the local Board, for instance, acts on its authority to provide a COLA, which right now would have to be a permanent COLA under the local Board's authority, that that would be recognized and paid for through employer contributions. On the State's side, it's more of a matter, at least as I understand it, of recommendations that you would make to the legislature in January, and the policy in terms of the ECRIS is similar, that if the State Board were recommending either a one-time supplement or a permanent COLA, which the State Board could recommend either of those things in January, that it should also be recommending to the legislature that those things be funded through increased employer contributions.
I have a question, if I might, at this point. In terms of the flexibility of the ECRIS, when we adopted the ECRIS, a lot of, I mean, this never, this issue never came to, at least to my mind, and I'm just wondering, is a policy amendment, do we have the flexibility to amend the ECRIS in terms of a policy that says, or that could allow us to provide a one-time supplement and not have to increase the employer's contribution for that one-time, limited supplement? Do we have the authority to amend an ECRIS as a policy, and then move on from there?
I believe that was Mr. Moore's asking the question.
Probably Alan.
Mr. Moore, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And my understanding is that the Boards have the authority to amend the ECRIS, but I did, in my comments, give some reasons why I think the policy right now is a prudent one.
Other questions? You had a couple of.
Couple other things. So, for the next 45 minutes, I'll. I get my other hat, actuary hat off, compliance hat off. On the 17th of this presentation, you can see the history of collections toward overpayments. Overpayments are amounts that are paid by the retirement systems, that is later determined need to be repaid to the retirement systems. The yellow line across the middle would show the amount to be collected every month. If we were able to collect $10 million in the course of a year, the actual amount collected in the last 12 months was approximately $8.5 million. And at the end of September, the total amount of overpayments that have been identified that are out to be collected are about $38.5 million from all the retirement systems. On the next page, one of the compliance sections, we're talking about the contribution-based benefit cap, which is sometimes called the anti-pension spiking law. You can see that since 2015, there's been 426 total retirements that have led to invoices being issued under that law, 158 of those for the local system, 268 for the State system. The total amount that's been sent in invoices is $41 million, and the retirement systems have collected more than $33 million of that. At the last meeting of the Boards, we informed you that the Department was continuing to evaluate its alternatives for 2022 and beyond regarding the engagement of the consulting actuary. Just a brief update, on August 9th, the Department issued a request for proposals for continuing actuarial services for an eight-year period beginning in 2022. This can be viewed in the State's interactive purchasing system as RFP 07-2021005. The procurement process resulting from this RFP is still going on. The appendix to the materials for today's meeting include a document called Kavanaugh McDonald Clerical Updates. As you recall, at the meeting in January, the Boards adopted the Experience Study Report, which is a lengthy document, more than 150 pages. In reviewing the materials for what they'll be presenting to you today, Kavanaugh McDonald noted three clerical errors in various pages of that report from January. The document for today's materials includes corrected versions of those three pages, for the sake of transparency. There are pages 113, 123, and 154 from the report from January. And in the interest of time, I'd be glad to take any questions about what's different and that's corrected, but in the interest of time, we'll skip that. But we've included the Kavanaugh McDonald. But we've included the Kavanaugh McDonald Clerical Update as part of the record of materials for today's meeting to document those corrections. And that concludes my remarks.
Questions? Sam again.
Were you gonna seek unanimous consent to add those documents to the reports?
Sorry.
Were you gonna seek unanimous consent to add those documents to the reports?
I've been advised I need to seek unanimous consent to add those documents to the reports.
I think it's just having a part of it in the record.
Okay. Without objection, then we'll do that. Three quick things. Jeff asked about, when we developed the original ECRIS policy, why wasn't, there was a discussion about this. And if my memory is correct, at that time, for 21 years, the plan has not achieved its assumed rate of return on average for 21, for the last 21 years. I explained why that was, the cause of the 9/11 and the Great Financial Crisis, plus the cause of anyone who did this. So, that's probably a small answer to Jeff's question about why this wasn't considered because we had even, God knows, above the water, even considered this. So, that's, Jeff, that's important to you. Secondly, it's not a small matter that when Patrick just reported about the compliance with the pension spiking issue, and you've heard me say this before, some people refer to these as contribution deficits. I've been very clear that generally, people whose pensions are spiked are people who are in power or know people who have power. And we're generally not talking about the assistant principal who gets to be the principal or the custodian who becomes the lead custodian. And as I've said repeatedly, when this occurs, the cost of these increased pensions for these individuals was being subsidized by the other 900,000 people in this plan. And I don't think that was, there's legislation about this. It wasn't right, still not right, it's never going to be right. If a local board, city, county, or school board, community college wants to increase somebody's salary to the extent that it spikes their pension, that is their governing board's issue. But they're not going to finance those decisions on the backs of every other person in this pension plan. They're going to do it, they're going to pay the bill. And you just heard, $41 million bill, $33 million of that collected. For those new board members, just to refresh you, just not too far from here, we had one high-level public school official who was able, a young person, to get $11,200 cell phone expenses, car allowance expenses, maybe a couple of other expenses, roll that into that person's final four-year compensation. That $11,000 resulted in a $542,000 pension spike. Increased pension, that's not their pension, that's the increase in their pension over that person's lifetime. So, when we talk about these things, it's just real important because this is our example of watching the pennies in the paper clips. Because if you look the other way on these issues, you'll look the other way on lots of other issues that might involve hundreds of millions of dollars. And lastly, as far as these overpayments, we make mistakes. You know, we're the check delivery business. We spend $800 million every 30 days around here. And we make mistakes. And I want to let you know that when we make a mistake, when we overpay somebody, we have meetings about this, and we talk about the person's situation, how old they are, what's the likelihood we're ever going to get this money back, and we try to make it as compassionate as possible. I think generally, when we underpay somebody, so, I just want to let you know, as far as the account receivables and the payables, when we find that we make a mistake, we're very, we start with our heart. Eventually, we make decisions with our minds, but we do start with our heart on these topics. So, I just wanted to, it wasn't the biggest part of Patrick's presentation, but just to let you know how we think about these topics, so. All right, quick question, Larry. Not to shortchange you or speed you up, but the meat of your presentation, is it 20-minute segments or 30-minute segments? I just wanted to... All five-minute break forward.
Yeah, the first chunk, we'll go through teasers, that's probably closer to 25, 30, and then elders, since we're over a lot of teasers, that would be like 15, and then the rest is a series of them, so.
All right, let's, if someone wants to do something different, let's go through the teasers, and obviously, people have rights to pick up and... They need to take a break after we get through the teasers. Lance, are you still on?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you. Can you, sorry, I skipped over you. Just give us a brief update on the IAC.
Sure, you want to proceed with that?
Yes, sir.
All right, guys. The IAC most recently met on August 25th for a view of performance of the investments within our retirement system specifically for quarter two of 2021. Highlights included, our pension fund had a fifth consecutive quarter of positive returns as our economy continues to recover. Additionally, after negative first quarter return in investment-grade fixed income due to rising rates, the portfolio was able to bounce back in the second quarter. Total assets under management rose in quarter two to $171 billion, up 12.4 billion from quarter one, a return of 7.8% and up $30 billion since the end of last fiscal quarter, excuse me, last fiscal year. Both of these increases can be attributed to the appreciation of the underlying funds. Chris Morris updated, there were no major changes to allocation in quarter two. Portfolio is currently 7.7% overweight to growth, and also rates and liquidity due to cash, most and neutral to multi-strategy. Also, continued positive news with an update that our fund's one-year return basis is the second highest fiscal year return since 1997 with a return of just 18%. Total performance continues to outperform policy benchmarks for five-year periods. Impressive returns were also reported for our investments within private equity realm, earning north of 50% to their portfolio allocation. Our fund continues to do more, to do more resources at less expense, thanks to the hard work to Chris, Jeff, and their staff. We'll recognize them for their hard work over the past several months, and in the face of uncertainty, they stayed the course, and the state is in a much-placed cause of it. That concludes my remarks. Treasurer?
Thank you, Lance. Any questions?
This is Barbara, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, I really appreciate that report. I think it's great to hear how that's going. I'm wondering in the future if it's possible to get a little summary of that in, like with the chart or some stuff, that we have that with our materials?
Yes, we'll try to do that. The investment advisory committee is an advisory committee, but I think, knowing what I know about Lance and Greg, that they're all, we can work with them to synop...
Thank you.
But synopsize this and get it to you. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Treasurer, this is Lynda Gunner, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just about to say something to that effect, too, because I was having a hard time hearing him, and it was kind of breaking up. So, that, I think that would be excellent, because then we can make sure we have the right numbers. But thank you for the report.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? Larry?
Yes, Treasurer, members of the board, Larry and I are from Kavanaugh McDonald Consulting. With me today is Lynda Gunner, Jonathan Craven, who you've seen in the past, retired this past summer. Lynda's been working on the team for the past, since the beginning of 2019, I remember vividly. And so, delighted to be here. She's actually been on the Zoom call, so of course, her face is really small, the Zoom cards have caused some difficulty to see her. So, we're here to present the results of the January 1, 2021 evaluations. And as part of this, it goes to about how well-funded the plan is as of that snapshot date, as well as what the employer contributions are for the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2023. This, this type of readable chart that's up there right now is a snapshot of the systems that we're going to be presenting results on. In addition, we also have results for deathbed plans and the DIPN plans. But this is a terrific summary, so if you just have room for two pages, you know, in your file, these are the two that you really like to have. There's like one or two others that we'll go over, but briefly, just talk about these topics, and we're going to get into deeper a little bit later. Obviously, the number of members up at the top there, we have a broken down by active members, the group currently serving the citizens of North Carolina. Terminated employees are folks that have terminated, but they haven't started collecting their benefits yet, and retirees and beneficiaries, those are folks that are currently receiving benefits. So, you see the totals hanging out there, which are markedly different than what Patrick reported, you know, from back in 1941. Key results of the actual valuation as of December 31, 2020, given market value of assets, that's the amount that's reported to us, and the actual world value of assets. There, the actual value of assets is a smooth value of assets. We average returns in over a five-year period. The purpose of that is to keep contributions more level than if we were to use market. Extra accrued liability is, that's our funding target. That's the amount of money that we're driving towards to get into the plan over the course of time. That amount grows every year. It grows for a couple of different reasons. It grows with pay, it grows with benefit accruals, it shrinks, so that we pay out benefits from the plan. But that's the target that we have, the unfunded extra accrued liability, that's the difference between accrued liability and actual value of assets. That's that shortfall that we systematically work towards funding over the course of time. And then the funded ratio is an easy metric to look at in terms of how much dollars you have to cover liabilities on the system. We're striving to get to 100% funded. There's projections later on that will show that. The bottom half of the chart is the development of the contributions to the plan. And there's a few different components here. You have the estimated normal costs, the employer portion of the cost of benefits accruing during the year. So, when you look at the state plan, that's just over $1 billion a year goes towards accruing of benefits. The estimated crude liability contribution, that's the amount to pay off that unfunded liability, the amount to drive us to 100% funded over time, and that amount, we're teachers' plan is $1.9 billion. You'll recall that we adopted, or we have not recommended assumption changes, the board adopted those. And as part of that, we phased in the cost of that assumption change over the course of five years. And so, there's negative $405 million for the state. That reflects the fact that we haven't fully reflected the change in assumptions in our contribution rate. So, we still have another $400 million to go. There's a total contribution there. The ECRIS, SCRIS was a little bit higher for the teachers, state employees, we'll see that a little bit easier later on, at $2.7 billion. And finally, we show the amounts as rates down below. And then we show for judges and legislative and national guard, these are the plans under the purview of the state portion of the board. You know, while the numbers are smaller, these are obviously very important plans, but the numbers are a bit smaller when you compare it to the state plan. Frankly, the state plan is one of the largest plans in the country. Going forward, in the next slide, we have the plans under the purview of the local board, and similar, the format's similar to what we had for the state plans. So, up at the top, we have a count of members. Then we have the key metric of how well-funded the plans are, and the assets in the plan, and then the development of the contributions down below. So, again, a nice two-page summary, two-page fact sheet of the results, which you might find useful to present on a schedule. Moving on to the presentation, and I'm going to apologize in advance, we're going to bounce around just a little bit. And I planned on, we planned on covering just parts of the slides here to begin with. And there's a slide, there's a slide that I'd like to start on in the presentation, Slide 42. It's, oh, I'm on Slide 43, you know, one of the, Patrick is a staff actuary, and retirement committee refers to us as the independent component, which we are. We're dependent, you know, we're trying to do the best that we know with respect to the retirement system. But the reality is, actuaries sort of have a similar mindset. So, some of these words are like, Patrick did, are you doing the hoop or not? Just the way we're hardwired. And so, some of this might, on Slide 43, find the right one, and I think it might be, unfortunately, I have determined I can't...
43 is the presentation.
Of the presentation, I'm sorry, yeah. Unfortunately, I've determined over the past several months, I've lost par vision. But on Slide 43, we have key takeaways, and this sounds very similar to the stuff that Patrick said. We've actually had this in the presentation for years. The key takeaway, all the state plans, here we say, teasers is well-funded compared to peers. And, you know, it's due to a variety of things, and stakeholders working together. Teasers well-funded is all the North Carolina retirement systems, whether it's the board approving the contribution rates, legislation passing it, everyone's working together, it keeps the plan well-funded. In terms of appropriating, contributing, or many contribution amounts, there was one year out of 80 years where it was showing, and I think it was like 85% of the contribution. Assumptions that had aggregated typically been more conservative than peers, we went through that when we discussed assumptions in tail at the last year, the early part of this year. You know, when I say more conservative, what I mean is that they develop higher liabilities and higher contribution rates compared to peers. So, liability doesn't fund, are paid out over a 12-year period, and you might think, well, that sounds sort of reasonable, elaborate somewhere around 24 years. And more importantly, you set a 12-year policy period, and you follow it. The next bullet, ad hoc cost of living adjustments, and they're typically only provided when certain financial conditions are met. And quite frankly, over the past several years, they haven't been met, and you can probably never remember this bullet point, it's been in the presentation, but it's really in there all along. It's a critical part, I think, of keeping the plan well-funded. And the change in benefits in the past are, you know, they're modest to extent, but in addition to that, there's a lot thought put into the benefit changes. Now, when I read these slides, at the beginning of last week, I sat on a panel of actuaries, which I know sounds like a fantastic time, but this panel of actuaries, we were talking about pension plans, stability. And it's a concept that's really hard, like, what does it even mean, the definition of it? We couldn't come to a conclusion what that meant, but it's one of those deals you know when you see it. And another colleague put up, you know, put together a slide and said, well, here are some of the things I think contribute to pension plan stability. So, that plan's in effect and not a burden to taxpayers or employers or any other constituents in the future. And that list looked a lot like what... looked a lot like what's been going on in North Carolina for 80 years. Like these bullet points almost to a bullet. And, you know, within addition to, you know, particularly assumptions that are, are more conservative, the contributions going in. And, and finally, I call them, that were its benefits, for lack of a better word, the benefits that aren't guaranteed unless certain financial objectives are met. So I'm sorry that's winded, but I think it has set the stage in terms of decisions that you're going to be making later on, well, in January. But just set the mindset of, of what you need to continue that's been already going on for several years. All right. Slide two in the presentation. And then I promise I'm just going to skip two, three, four pages at a time. So slide two of the presentation, we'll talk about the purpose of the annual valuation. We do this every year. And, and we do this to determine the contributions to the fund, as well as how well-funded the plan is. And the other thing that we do, and that's what we're going to get into when we start talking about the, the results, we made assumptions about what we thought would happen last, in last year's valuation. And we're going to tell you where they came up a little different, one of the results a little bit different. We have a couple of slides we're covering with regard to that. So on the next slide. So this is the process. And, and while you're sitting through this, you know, we're talking about the state plan now, but this is inherent with all the valuations. Our, this valuation process is the glorified budgeting process. We take a lot of information about what we know right now, and we make projections about what we think is going to happen in the future. One of the inputs here, the member data asset data back for provisions, staff provides. So it's in a, in a rather times like tax, we really appreciate staff support and working with us to make sure these, these results can get to in a, in a reasonable, in a, in a timely fashion. You might think nine months, if nine months after the beginning of the year, it takes that long. It takes longer if, if, if folks aren't working together. So we appreciate working with staff to get this all done. Moving ahead, there's, there's some slides in here that we sometimes cover, but we're not going to this year because quite frankly, they're not impacting the results all that much. And so while skipping over the, the member data stuff, folks might step back and say to themselves, well, wait a minute, what about, you know, this is a very difficult year for people within the fund, you know, with COVID and things of that nature. The reality is it didn't impact our valuation results all that much. I mean, obviously, it's, it's, it's a difficult thing for participants in the plan. There were obviously additional deaths within the plan, but those deaths didn't move the needle in terms of the financial results. I don't mean to be insensitive. Obviously, there, you know, there's compassion within actuaries, but it didn't impact the results. And so we're not going to talk much about the demographics. In fact, that's the end of prepared comments on demographics. On slide seven, there were more, more slides. We have the asset data dependent for the fund. And there's, you know, there's a couple of things that we look at when we look at the asset data fund. Here it is for the past two years. You know, that's already turned over the past two years is above the 7% return assumption that was in effect during these two valuations. There are a couple more critical things I think when you look at this. The amount of benefit payments coming out of the fund, you know, 4.8 billion dollars and 4.9 billion dollars over 2019 and 2020 would be very difficult to pay off if the monies weren't in the fund to pay them. You look at the contributions of, of, you know, a total of about 3.1 million between employer and employee contributions, you'd have to come up with an addition, almost 2 billion dollars. So that's the beauty of pre-funding these plans, making sure the contributions go in. On slide eight, we talk a little bit about the difference between market value of assets of the fund. And there's a history of the market value of assets. The fact of the reality is that the returns tend not to be real close to the, the 7% return of 7% in place. That's just a reality of, of, of the map. That's why we make use of the smoother actual value of assets, which sort of smoothes the payments for the unfunded liability of the plan. Moving ahead to slide nine, I want to touch on this briefly in terms of the asset allocation. There's an annual study going on right now that's potentially going to change, I suspect. For purposes of setting the investment return assumption, we make use of the allocation of the assets for the fund. So when we made a recommendation of 6.5%, Patrick was putting words in our mouth, you know, the 6.5% we're comfortable with. But it may be just a touch on the high end. Now, we're going to review it when, when we look at assumptions, the next experience review in four years. But it, it very well could be on the higher end when we actually get the results of the asset liability side. Now, basing that upon, we've worked with a lot of different retirement systems, but a lot of them, a lot of those systems are anticipating returns of about 5.5%, 5%, 6% over the next 10 years. And then after that, maybe we're, 5%, 7%. So you got to survive the first decade to get there. The other thing with regards to this, and, and, and filing onto what Patrick said, is that, you know, we're assuming we're going to get all the returns of the fund. We're not going to take some of these returns from the fund and, and, and look to buy new benefits with that money. If we were going to do that, you know, there are probably a little bit more extensive studies that determine what the impact would be on the long-term investment returns and see if that we can still support 6.5% return. Somewhere in there, I feel like an analogy with money trees is a little bit more accurate over there. The next slide, like the cover is on slide 17. And this is the history of the actual returns and the market returns over the past five years. The amount in the red is the actual value of assets. The amount in the blue is the market value of assets. And you can see the market value of assets heads up steadily over the course of time because we're averaging in the returns, whereas the market, the market value of assets has a little bit more volatility. The benefit of using the smooth amount, we'll see in a couple of slides, because the extra crude liability actually grows steadily from year to year to year. And so they match them up rather well without violating the integrity of not getting enough contributions into the system. Slide 18 is a protection or a history of returns on both a market basis and an actual basis. And a couple of things are here. One, the, we base our results on the actual value of assets, which is the first column. And if you work your way backwards, this, this 8.8% return we have on the actual basis, that's the first time we've been assumed right of return on that basis since 2014. And if you look over the course of the 20-year period, that number is around 6.7% on a market basis, it's like 6.4%. So over the long haul, we've not been achieving that number over time. Moving ahead to slide 20. Slide 20 is a breakdown of the accrued liability of the fund. This is our target in the fund that we have broken down into three distinct colors here, just to give a sense of where that accrued liability allocated. The green is active members of the fund. The peach is deferred members or terminated members of the fund, which represents a rather small amount. And then the blue is the retirees. And the retirees, we anticipate become a larger, a larger portion of the fund. Another thing when we get into this, the actual crude liability grew a bit more than we would typically anticipate over the past year. It's primarily due to the changing assumptions. It went from 84.9 billion to 89.8 billion over the course of the past year, 2.33 billion. Of that was the prudent changes to the assumptions that were adopted earlier.
Larry, let me interrupt, because I think the board members have heard me say slowly and clearly as I can, that for the first time in state history, there are less people paying into these plans than are not. That's what this graph shows you. And it's never going to, it's never going to change. There are less people paying into this plan than there are. And that's never, ever going to change in our life. And that's important because the way that we pay out retirees is we've got huge money coming, that money comes in every 30 days and then it's invested. So when I say this, that graph is really the picture of what I'm trying to say. Less people paying into the plan than are not. And that's never going to go back in the other direction.
Slide 21. That is a good point. A lot of plans are in that state or recently got in the state. And you're, it's not going to change. It's only the way it works. Yep. Slide 21, actual value of assets versus the crude liability. In the red, we have the crude liability bars that we saw earlier. And then the actual value of assets to the right. You know, the unfunded liabilities are currently almost 12 billion dollars. We're going to pay it off over a 12-year period. So as you can tell, a lot of the contribution goes towards paying off the unfunded liability. Right, that's how we're in the amount on slide 22, this unfunded liability of the plan. And at the top of the, of the chart, we had unfunded liability at the last valuation of 11 billion, 520 million dollars. We anticipate that, that unfunded liability grows with that number called normal cost. Normal cost is the cost of benefits accruing. That's 1.775 billion dollars. Now, that amount is the total normal cost. If you go back and look at the number, we talked about contributions earlier, that was just the employer portion, you got the members. Contributions to the fund reduce the unfunded liability. That was to the tune of 3.2 billion dollars. There's interest charges everywhere, whether we're here or at a car dealership, 758 million dollars. Then the next three numbers are items that, where were we different? Where did things come in differently from what we're anticipating? All these other things were expected amongst. The asset gain or loss, that is the amount on a smooth basis that reduced the unfunded liability because the assets were larger than we anticipated. That's the 1.3 billion dollar number that Patrick talked to about earlier. That represents a 1.3 billion dollar reduction to the unfunded liability. The extra crude liability gain-loss, this tends to be a pretty small number. This is the difference in what happened with the members of the plan. Did more die or retire than anticipated, how were sound increases, things of that nature. And typically, it's a small number compared to everything else that is here. And finally, the impact of assumption changes is an increase of 1.4 billion dollars. So the unfunded liability, despite tailwinds on the asset side of the house, the unfunded liability grew by about 350, 360 million dollars over the past year. Moving on, talk a little bit about player contributions on slide 24 of the, and this is a graphical representation. And the amount showing up here, this is what I refer to as actual determined employer contributions, sort of the raw number before we apply the ECRIS policy. And so the amounts that we show here, the green, it's a percent going towards the normal, the normal rate that is the benefits accruing. The blue or teal is the amount going to the accrued liability amount up top as to pay out the unfunded liability over 12-year period. What else is tucked within here though, as well is the direct rate smoothing of the plan, what we're facing, and the impact of the assumptions in the plan. So to get a fuller picture, we see on the next play page, on slide 25, how the ECRIS plays into this. The ECRIS results in the contribution via recommended 16.09%, which is higher than the actual determined with direct rate smoothing towards the plan. Their, the minimum amount, 16.09%, and what that is, the prior year appropriate amount increased by 0.35%. We always rack it up to contributions by 0.35% year in, year out. We always want to make sure that we have a floor of the actual determined amount on the plan. The next slide is the history of the amounts and the contributions. And the primary takeaway here is the contributions are increasing, whether we're reducing contributions, if we're reducing the investment return assumption, or, or returns aren't what they are, or we have to change assumptions. It just seems contributions are continually increasing. We'll talk a little bit more about that. Let's get into that. Now, similar to the slide, on slide 27, this slide is similar to the unfunded liability changes, but here we're looking at the contribution rounds. And again, this is the ADEC, this is before we get into that contribution rate stabilization policy number. The last year, we started with 15.74% of pay. We anticipated the unfunded liability to decrease. And that's going to decrease the contribution, decrease contribution by 0.21. Demographics barely moved the needle, 0.06 to the negative, 0.06% pay. Investment gain or loss, well, 1.03% reduction in contribution to that. Contributions lessen the ADEC, this is that, something that's fairies. There's just a timing difference between when the valuations are done and when it gets appropriated. So some years, it's positive, some years, I can, it's generally small at this point, 0.9%. Assumption change increase the contributions by almost 3% of pay. And we're facing this in over five years. So this year, we're taking a 2.4% credit to get down to 15.13%. Okay, slide 28, potential colas. If you look back at past presentations, this was a slide that basically said there is no investment gains to, to even consider this. And so this year, because I don't think it's the first time in several years, we added some additional slides for clarity in terms of the process and things to consider when we're looking at. And Patrick and I did share notes, but again, like I said, actuaries tend to be hardwired the same way as we go through this. So based on the actual gains recognized in the evaluation, we're presenting now a cost of living adjustment, and the benefit could affect it through I-1, 2022, could be funded through gains. We have a few considerations later on with regard to that. That 1.3 billion dollars worth of decrease in the unfunded liability is what we look at. We don't look, you know, that, that's something to consider. You also could look at the increase in liability, the assumptions, as well as the, I think that is a big one there. So looking ahead to next year is the, the elements over the next few bullet points, it's a similar slide to last year. You know, where if returns exceed negative 2.69%, we start having an actual investment for 2021. So like a very low bar. And part of, most of that is due to the fact that not all the investment returns that were reflected in the valuation yet. We try, again, the actual value of assets, which we use to try and keep contributions more stable than they otherwise would be. Some plans, it's higher than the market, sometimes it's lower. Currently, it's lower and those returns reflect it. So we're looking for 1% cola return exceeding 0.73% could be considering it next year. Bottom bullet, we're not attorneys. We just don't trust that. Nice. Slide 29, poll considerations. And this gets into the, some of the, the basics of it. The teachers' sports have recommended colas to the general assembly. You don't have the authority to brand them. General Assembly, 135-50, has various provisions related to colas, including the permanent cola limited to 4% or inflation, whichever is less. And when it would not require an increase in our contribution rate. Type of increases, supplemental payments are termed for, you know, one-time payment. We'll call that supplemental payment, or permanent cola, whereas you increase it and it continues for the life of the members. And then when you think about, we talk about funding of it for the supplemental cola, or the supplemental payment, so that should be paid off immediately. You don't want to run into negative cash flows when you're paying off a one-time supplement. 12-year funding is supposed to be the policy for permanent enhancements, which is not unreasonable creative time. Could be shorter, but I don't think you're going to do a lot of negative cash flows, if any, if you advertise it over a 12-year period. And the contribution increase is added to the ECRIS rate per the ECRIS policy. The increase we have is added to the ECRIS rate. So on slide 30, you know, the amount of the actual investment gain, 1.3 billion dollars. And as a result, the maximum amount of cola in this permanent could be considered as 2.41%. The 2.41% is preliminary. We have to wait to see what the CPI is for the year. That could limit it, although I suspect it might this year. The increase in the ECRIS suspect it won't this year. Uh, the increase in the ECRIS rate, if you, uh, with a 2.41% cola, would be 1.01% of pay. And that increase would last for 12 years. Uh, and you can see the increase in the accrued liability, if you grant 2.41% of new benefits, the increase of the liability, it says that's granted or passed by $1.3 billion. And then you see the impact on the ECRIS down below, 15.74% ECRIS rate, uh, effective 1, 712022, plus 1.01% for the cola in the far right column, gives you 16.75% contribution. The 2.41% is, you could obviously grant less, anything from 0 to 2.41%. So we show similar numbers for 1% or 2%. Now, at the bottom in the box, we have the cost of a 1% supplement cola. It's about 52.2 million or 0.31% of pay. That'd be payable this for one year. And now we get into considerations, which, or sounds a fair amount like what you've heard already from Patrick, but these are things that we think about on our own and, and, and so most of it's, uh, in line. Uh, there's other things to consider here when you look at slide 31. Uh, Patrick touched to this. I mean, and my wording probably isn't as good. Uh, provide colas under this type of gain sharing, or I call it gain sharing, that colas are not guaranteed by any sense. We do it out of gains or, or extra money, uh, which is a weird term. But, you know, when you have investments that are higher than anticipated, these programs work best when the amount of benefits granted are limited. And then the other thing is when the investment return assumption is lower than the expected return adjusted by the cola payout. So Patrick made a comment about, uh, treasury years, there's some sort of year back in 1990 of like 9% and, but we're assuming seven and a half percent. So you could invest and give returns better than the assumed rate of return. We don't have that right now, obviously. Uh, the other way to work your way around this is to determine what type of returns you think will come from the, the portfolio and then adjust it for these payouts of the colas, which would lower the assumed rate of return, rate of return assumption. Uh, is the investment gain permanent? Probably not. I mean, when we talk about potentially having returns of 5.5% over the next decade, and that's just my guess, I'm not an investment professional. I suspect when Alan does the ALM and presents it sometime over the next several months, they're probably going to say something similar. And we're anticipating 6.5% returns. Those gains that we have right now in the system, we might need them to keep the contributions from increasing. Uh, I think that's the highlights, uh, of it. Uh, employer contributions, how, uh, this might be something to consider. I mean, what portion of this is employer contributions? Employer contributions, well, over the past five years, employers are putting in about 65% of the contributions, members about 35%. Uh, and then you have to remember all of any of these recommendations that you might make. Other central assembly would need to appropriate the amount. I've said a lot, thoughts, comments, keep pounding away. All right. Um, moving on to projections, on slide 34. We were talking about snapshots compared last year to this year. Now we're going to get into what we think the future may hold. Now, here's the deal. No one knows what the future is going to hold. We show a couple of lesser projections here to just give a sense as to how volatile these numbers are. And nothing's guaranteed, uh, by any sense. So, uh, within these projections that we're going to show up, contribution requirements, funded status, a couple of key projection assumptions. That second bullet point, you know, uh, valuation of interest rate, that means the liabilities are projected at 6.5% per year. We have the impact of the direct rate smoothing tucked within here. Uh, market value is 6.5%, but we also have other, uh, anticipated projected returns hanging out there that, uh, show the sensitivity of, of different returns happening. Uh, there is no growth in the active member, uh, population, no cost of living or new benefits are in these projections. And finally, there's a floor of the member contribution of, or client contribution of 6%. Um, so slide 35, we have here a projection of contribution rates. And in the, I can plant up at the top, purple, uh, we have, uh, the contribution rates under the ECRIS, uh, plan. And generally, those contributions are higher than the actually determined amounts that are showing up below. Now, the reason for why they're higher is remember, we're phasing in the impact of assumption changes over five years. If we didn't do that, I think in the first couple of years, the KDEC would actually be higher than the, uh, the ECRIS contribution. But, uh, you know, if we have a return of, uh, the middle projection is the baseline projection based upon 6.5% return, and you can see the contribution rate is anticipated to, to decrease over the course of that, whatever reason, it's anticipated to decrease. It's sort of starting to get close to paying off that funded liability if everything comes in as expected, which is huge. Yes. Um, if we get a 0% return, and I'm not making a comment of the likelihood of getting that return, just like if we get it, just for lesser the purposes of that. We have that, uh, car power bar up at the top, or line up at the top, and contributions sort of hover around 14% of pay before they have actually worked their way down to 6%. If we get a 13% return in 2021, you can see the contribution, uh, get down to 6% within about five years. But again, these are just one set of scenarios just to get a sense as to how volatile these numbers are. And that the ECRIS were set right now, you know, yeah, maybe, maybe we end up having that violated, but it looks like a good bet that we'll be following along the stable, uh, ECRIS contribution policy. Funded ratios here, I've said it before, uh, when I produce these charts in the state of Illinois, which is where I woke up a couple of days ago, I need to, you know, I need to show 50-year projections. And they still don't get to 100% funding. Here, we can have really short projections because you're getting 100% funded, uh, potentially, if every, all assumptions are met, anywhere from, uh, three, four years from now to, uh, you know, 2030. So maybe sometimes suspected. Now again, maybe, um, I like to look at the, uh, the slide on, uh, on slide 39, which Patrick talked about. Here we have a projection showing, uh, uh, the funded status if we, that we saw earlier in the baseline projection, the 6.5% return. Well, what happens if we, uh, give returns of 5.5% over the next several years? This might be what the folks that, uh, they're doing the asset liability modeling will say. We don't get there. We just don't get there. Uh, the, the funded status sort of hovers, it's, it's close to 100%, uh, but you're going to have to make up that gap with additional contributions if, if we do end up, uh, having to reduce the, uh, uh, the discount rate in the next historic study and increase the contributions. Uh, because I'm a, a lighthearted and jovial person, I have the 7.5% returns up at the top, uh, in the green, and it's just to try and provide balance. But I think the likelihood of that happening is somewhere around zero. So you can look at it and smile wistfully at it. But I would be looking either at the gray line or the blue line or something in between that. Uh, I'm going to get into the key takeaways and, uh, I think I went over 20 minutes. Okay. So the key takeaways here, uh, market return was better than the 7% that was assumed for the last valuation. Remember, we reduced it to 6.5 going forward. Uh, on an actual value basis, we had a return of 8.8%, so more than the 7% target. That did decrease the unfunded liability by $1.3 billion and it decreased the employer rate by 1.03% that justified the ECRIS. But the assumption changes, then we're going to see this pattern throughout all the plans, assumption changes, uh, prudently reducing the discount rate to 6.5% so that we continue to have, uh, conservative assumptions, uh, which are a hallmark of plans are sustainable. Uh, the increase the, uh, funded liability by 2.4 billion. Uh, and so when you compare it to the projections, the funds ratio is a bit lower and, and the actual determined contribution was a little bit higher when you compared the last year's projections. Uh, here's the summary of all the assumptions were changed. I mean, we, we talk about the investment return, uh, from 7 to 6.5%, but a whole slew of assumptions changed, but frankly, the investment return was the big one. Uh, there are some other things, like merit assumption doesn't really impact. Uh, the one item at the bottom, though, we talked about before, uh, inactives, uh, are valued. Uh, we fine-tuned that with a lot of help from Patrick, and that actually, uh, did reduce the liabilities by a nice chunk. That was another tailwind, uh, hanging out there. And this is where we began, slide 43. So this is the one you want to read to yourself before you go to bed tonight, or at least the day before a board meeting. That's the end of my 25-minute prepared comments, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Any questions? And you expect the elders to maybe take 10 minutes?
Yeah, the elders have a lot of similar stuff, and I'm just going to cut to the high points. I'll do that in 10 minutes.
Let me, uh, let's take a break. Uh, 11, oh my, 11:27. We'll be back in about five minutes. That's okay.
Uh, Mr. Treasurer?
Yeah.
This is Jeff Morris. I, another meeting, I'm going to have to leave it at, uh, 11:30. So I, um, I, I want to, before I do, I do want to express my appreciation for the staff. You, you guys made a very compelling argument, and it's a lot to take in consideration. So, uh, but I think you've, uh, shed some new light for, at least for me. And I, I appreciate the transparency in all your comments.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, we'll be adjourned for, uh, in recess for five minutes. And, uh, for board members, there's abs and, uh, some cuts, and there's a ice machine in there and so just, if you'd like some, uh, thanks for calling. Thank you. We're in research assignments.
Can we cut off you?
Uh, we're back in session and, uh, Wendy's going to go over some, uh, touch points on some of the other, uh, teaser plans and I'm going to ask for a motion to accept all the teaser reports and Larry will jump into the beat of the elders and the ID elders plans and then we'll ask for a motion.
Director Falwell, this is Barbara Gimpson. But I asked you. Sorry. Um, I didn't jump in fast enough, we went through the break. I had, I do have a couple of questions, if you would help me. Um, one, the first one I want to ask is going back to page eleven of those slides, we didn't really cover that, but I think that's the one that you're talking of, one of the ones where you're talking about where there's red line and blue line. And that's, I guess, like two thousand, the blue line or the, um, COLA for state retirees is always under the rate of inflation. Do you know, what could we get from the, um, consultant? What, like, what is the, how has that changed how much our pensions are worth? So like the difference of the real value of the purchasing power of a pension going back to two thousand to now? Because I see that red line stays above the blue line and I just want to kind of figure out over time what is the pension feel like to somebody that is retired and got it? Because I do get a fair number of, you know, just feedback from people asking, you know, complaining about that. So I'm really curious what it is. Is that possible?
Yeah, uh, I, I think I understand what you said. I may even type it out to you and make sure I understood your question correctly. Then we will sign that to our staff actuaries as well as our outside actuaries. And also this graph that, uh, that talks about the last fifty years of the plan regarding life expectancy, multipliers and, uh, and, uh, the other fund rates, I'd be glad to forward that, forward that also.
Thank you. I, I appreciate it. This just helps me put everything in perspective because I am so far away from a numbers person. But I do understand how people feel about it. So the next question.
And, and Director Gibson, you talk about the erosion of purchasing power. That's, that's real, uh, but it's not part of the benefit. Our benefit is based on years of service times the multiplier. And, uh, something you never talk about is the fact that, I'm supposed to be hired under a multiplier of one point five, but when they hired, they had, they enjoyed the multiplier of one point five. In some instances, a forty-five percent increase and... So we'll get all the next slide. Do you have another question?
Yes, actually two more. The second one is on page thirty-one. And I will tell you. Yeah. Let me just frame this question. I was all excited when I read the materials to the best that I could. Um, in this period of time, given all the other things I have going on and, uh, the number of things and that is kind of out of my regular ballpark. But, um, I was excited when I saw the one point three billion dollars and was thinking, you know, I saw the two point four one and I thought, wow, we're walking in here to recommend an increase. I'm getting a distinct feeling that we have, and I'm, I'm not saying it's not a legitimate or real concern, but there is a legitimate or real concern about doing that, in which case I think this probably garners a little more thought than discussion. But I'm, I'm a little confused after hearing Patrick and then Larry. I, is the two point four one consistent with the actuarial process? And, and what they advise, is that consistent or is actually inconsistent and against their advice?
So, so the, the, Larry, the one point three, uh, billion dollars, it's, it's, it's the calculation of, uh, the excess re- return in excess of the seven percent bogey on that smooth value. And so then we just apply the math of, you know, taking the one point three, uh, billion dollars and then what type of COLA can we pay for with that over the course of twelve years? And we solve for the two point four one percent. But I think that, is that one point three is a gross number or a net number when you add in the increase in liabilities?
Gross number, just assets.
That's just assets, not, not when you combine the assets and the liabilities.
Right, that's just, the one point three is assets.
That's correct.
And if that whole thing is granted, we immediately increase the liabilities by one point three billion dollars. Right. So it's just the math that goes in to determine, you know, how, how much, for lack of a better word, the one point three billion dollars worth of returns in excess of the seven percent converts into a COLA that you pay off over a one-time increase that you pay off over, uh, twelve years.
And the two point four one is the maximum COLA that you can consider. So that's the, the upper limit and the lower limit is zero. And so we're just giving you the full range of options.
Right, right, and I appreciate that and I, I get that. I'm trying to figure out though, is that, are you saying don't do it? Or you're saying it would be consistent if we did up to that much with the overall plan, you know?
I, I, so a couple of things. One, that's a policy decision. But we have a lot of considerations here that follow up on that slide, which I think of as, you know, you should take a moment to pause. Uh, I think we'll walk through a couple of those again, but, you know, the, uh, you know, is this a real investment gain? Is it permanent? When you, when you grant a, when a COLA is granted, that's a permanent increase in liability. You know, at, at some point, this investment return, we might find out if we need to use it in excess of the six nap or the seven percent return that was assumed. We might need that to offset, you know, lower returns that happen in the future. So it's, and it's hard to tell if a gain's permanent unless you have things like the nineteen ninety scenario where, you know, we, we're in the lock of the century to get a nine percent return and we could assume something happened. We knew we would have gains. Uh, and then, you know, they, they were still waiting on the eleventh Sunday, the six nap percent return might be not as conservative that we're used to using here in North Carolina. And we might want to squirrel away those, uh, excess, I'm doing here close access returns, uh, for when we need to, uh, if, if we need to reduce the discount rate at the next expense study. And while I know this sounds like, uh, one point three billion for the state plan, sounds like a lot of money and it is. Uh, if we have to reduce the discount rate, let's just say, uh, fifty basis points next go around, that one point three billion is about like fifteen or twenty percent of the cost of the increase in liability. And you might, it might be who we just scroll that side. That's sort of a new comment that I meant to say before, but there's a lot of moments for pause. Because my point, I don't make policy, I give consideration so that boards can develop the policy and, and work through the policy. But when I look at this as the independent out, when I, whenever I say I, there's no I and D, I'm sorry, Wendy. When we look at this, you know, uh, there's a few moments for pause here, uh, in terms of granting that and, and trying to align it what, what North Carolina retirement systems and all the constituents have been doing for decades. Does that answer?
Um, it's helpful. I think what you're, I, I, I still don't quite know what you're saying. Like it would be terrible to do it or that, you know, it's part of, part of the whole actuarial, you know, guessing game that you build in, some of that. And I guess part of my concern, I'm sure, um, others on the board probably are thinking this way too. So I apologize if they're not, I'm the only one that will know that. Um, it just seems like we have record year for, you know, the stock market. I think year-to-date, I saw some figure S and P was over twenty percent. Um, obviously we have record revenue on this date. And, you know, this goes for, for active state employees as well as for retirees. Is that for years and years since two thousand and eight, as you mentioned, the nine eleven and the fiscal crisis, I think state employees and retirees have understood, when all that happened, you know, we got cut, lost people and, you know, I'm, I'm approaching twenty-nine years in state government. So I've been here through all this, been an HR director through all this. And state employees kind of understand, it's a very clear, uh, financial line for the business of state government. They understand we can't ask for any across-the-board raises or COLA increases when everything is kind of crushed. So I just want to make sure I'm doing my due diligence as a member of this board, as a state HR director, as a part of the Cooper administration who has recommended, uh, a two percent increase this year as well as a two percent bonus this year and next year for state retirees. I just want to say that I would like to understand what it would take, uh, you know, not waiting twelve more years to see everything to a hundred percent, you know, what can we do? I know there's some talk about the one time, this is obviously talking, you know, we're talking about more of a permanent, but kind of gaming it out because I just, and, you know, this will probably take another meeting. I know there was an extra meeting, I think it was last year. I would probably suggest before the end of the meeting, we need to talk about having that. But I would like to feel really comfortable if we don't recommend doing some kind of a increase for retirees. Now, feel really comfortable with why that is, uh, not possible. Because I do think the, the way things look right now, it's like a once, it's once certainly in fourteen, thirteen, fourteen years, um, where it actually looked like it could be. That, that's, that's all I'll say right now.
Uh, Director Gibson, this is the Treasurer. Uh, we, I extend this to every board member. We will, uh, be glad to schedule something with you individually or anybody who wants to. And I think all these slides are important, but there's probably five or six of them that tick and tie together that sort of, if you, if we were all together in the same room and we had them all laid out, I think we could draw a map and put this puzzle together that make it more so that you would feel, uh, uh, more confident that you were considering all the unintended consequences. We'd be glad to do that.
Secretary, I would also like that if possible, just to turn to her. Yep, yep, thank you, sir.
And, and it's important as we go through all this, when you, you know, that you consider the difference between... We, we have two things, we have an asset, we have liability. Assets, what the investors, people are doing and the liability is what we have to pay out. And so it's not just, you can't look at just the assets, you have to look at the debt of the asset and the liability. We'd be glad to, to, to clarify that even more. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wendy?
All right, uh, so I was just going to report on the, the Florida State Plan for the judges, uh, legislative plan and the National Guard. Uh, I can go super high level, just because I know this is a, a, a little weary. Um, so for all of them, they all experienced a good asset return last year, so they had a investment gain, uh, that they compared to that. And then they also had, uh, changes due to the, all the assumptions from the experience setting that tended to raise costs. So we got sort of offsetting factors for each of them. They affected them, you know, just slightly differently, but for the most part, um, assets helped lower the contribution rate. The assumption changes helped, helped, uh, increase the contribution rate, but, uh, offsetting. So, uh, and I don't know if we even need to flip through the slides, but, um, just, uh, judges, contribution rate last year was thirty-eight point seven percent. Uh, this year it ended up at thirty-seven point oh one percent primarily. There was a investment gain, we also have a small gain on our demographics. Uh, and then assumption changes, we've raised the rate three percent, but we're smoothing it in. So we got a smaller, a smaller adjustment because the gains outweighed, uh, the losses. So that's kind of the, the rule of instruction. Judges, uh, legislative, uh, similar issue, good investment return. Um, had, uh, contribution rate last year twenty-seven point one five percent. This year we came in at twenty-two point oh five percent. Uh, they actually ended up, I'm having the, the gain from the investments and then a little bit of a change from the assumptions, but they also had a big demographic shift. Um, it looks like it was due to salary increases, primarily due to salary increases, they got a little bit of help on their contribution rate from the, from the salary increases as well. Um, and their funded ratio, actually because of that, their funded ratio is now ninety-seven point eight percent. Last year it was ninety-two percent, so that's a good, good shift for them. Uh, the disability plan, um, they ended up, same thing, uh, you know, good assets, um, impact from the assumptions changes. Their rate, uh, last year was point oh nine percent and this year, um, it came in at point one percent. So just a very slight, slight change for them. Um, and then National Guard, uh, they, they actually had a slight increase in their executive leave, um, but the total contribution rate is still, um, state level, it's just eleven billion dollars because of their, their funding policy. Uh, they had about five hundred thousand dollars in their contribution rate, um, primarily due to the impact of the assumption changes. They had, uh, we ended up putting a load on our normal cost for this plan because, um, people don't come to this plan until they have seven years of service and we have no information about, uh, anybody prior to that. So it's kind of every year we get people to kind of show up. Uh, so we put a, sort of an estimate of what, what that impact would be just so we can kind of prepare for it, um, so that we don't get this big, because you'd end up with a loss every year of these new people coming in. But we know they're going to come in, we just don't know what, what their impact is going to be. So we're trying to mitigate that and smooth that out a little bit. So that's, um, probably the, the bigger reason to them, um, with the, the slight increase. But, and then one other note though on this plan, there's been a lot of data cleanup, there's been a lot of work done with it. Uh, a couple of years ago, uh, maybe three, four years ago, they were seventy percent funded, um, but because of the cleanup of the data and also the funding policy, they're now ninety percent funded. So that's the, the, the extra contributions that have been going in here have actually really helped, uh, really helped this plan out and, you know, in a very good way. Um, that's very high level on these plans, but if anybody has any questions or wants any more detail, happy to do that.
I want to acknowledge General John and Juan Six, that we're very happy to have partnered with you and your advocacy for getting the National Guard funding lots and lots of here where the other ones were and was both way behind when I was, became State Treasurer, so.
Okay, uh, thanks, uh, Secretary to, uh, Mr. Ken Loth, Patrick, um, and helping with Sam, partner to generate policy and pursue the extra funding. Uh, hopefully they'll keep going for a couple more years and, um, we'll get up to, uh, with the judges and the legislative. It's ninety-seven percent.
We, uh, just a couple of, uh, housekeeping things, uh, uh, whether it's the rescue squad or EMS or volunteer firefighters, uh, what Wendy sort of talked about, this cleaning up of this stuff, uh, and what it can do to your, to your, uh, solvency of your plan. And as, uh, Kevin and Josh have, you know, said many times, we have people who are in the, in the, uh, volunteer firefighter plan, who volunteer firefighters five years, twenty-seven years ago, they moved to California, they're never coming back and just cleaning up this stuff. And we're, if we can ever catch our breath, uh, we will, we're going to try to clean up the teasers and elders because just like there was, there was value to cleaning this National Guard roster up. There's value to cleaning up this, the, uh, the, uh, volunteer firefighter fund. There's, there's be a lot of value in cleaning up the teasers and the elders plan just to make sure everything's right. And, uh, and I'll say, I don't know how to say this without sounding awkward. We can't standardize these benefits, uh, between the el- the judges and the registered deeds and, and all this other stuff. But there probably are some things going on in some of those plans in terms of what, how they can get paid out that probably need to be looked at from a fair, more fair and just way. Uh, and just, uh, nothing to be alarmed about or, but it's just, uh, when people tell me, uh, when I'm out on the street and I'm out, certain payouts that happen to some of these plans that don't really gee-haw with what the people, the teasers have available to them or the people, the elders have available to them. It just makes me, as a person who tries to be fair and just, it just makes me want to kind of look at these things to make sure that we're not so out of balance. Uh, because we talk about these hundred and big and dollar plans, but these, these judges and the registered deeds and all that are obviously very important also. Thank you. Any, anything else? And if not, I'll accept a motion to accept the actuarial report or, I need to read this into the record, uh, a consolidated motion to accept the twenty-twenty actuarial evaluation for teachers, teasers retirement system. for teachers, teasers retirement system, consolidated judicial retirement system, legislative retirement system, disability income plan of both Carolina and the North Carolina National Guard pension plan.
So moved. This is Catherine.
Thank you Superintendent. Second, Jeffrey's the second. Any further discussion? If not, the court will call a roll. Al Fallout?
Aye.
Barbara Gibson?
Aye.
Dirk Jefferson?
Aye.
John Ebighausen?
Aye.
Joshua Smith?
Aye.
Liz Brewer?
Aye.
Liz Gunter?
Aye, aye.
Margaret Reader?
Aye.
Oliver Hawley?
Aye.
And Berta Gannon?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll now have a brief review of the elders system. And then I think it's Wendy will pick up on the smaller parts of the elders system. And then we'll ask for a consolidated motion regarding that also.
So elders, we've covered a lot of this with the state plan. A lot of this is very similar. So for elders, we're going to have to slide 23. Slide 23, we're going to talk about the unfunded liabilities of the plan and, and what caused it to increase from about 3.2 billion up to 4.1 billion. And a lot of the story is, it's, oh, okay. Similar components here and similar story. Now, funded liability was 3.3 billion last year. We anticipated growing by the normal cost. The cost of benefits growing turned up a little over $800 million. Contributions reduced by about $1.1 billion. There's always interest, you know, 219 million in interest. And then we're getting to the three things that were different than we anticipated last year. The same group we've talked about. Assets were higher than expected by the $287 million on that smooth basis. The liabilities were higher than expected, which is different from what was on the state plan. So about $250 million. So small compared to the amount of liability, but there are items in there that cost a little bit higher. But then the assumption changes increased liabilities by $1.1 billion. So it's approved changes we recommended, the board adopted. So the, the net result is the unfunded liability grew from 3.3 billion to 4.1 billion. So yes, we had terrific asset gains, but unfunded liability still grew. Moving ahead to slide 25. We get into contributions and the, this is here the contributions on the actual basis before we reflect the ECRIS, so the rate stabilization plan. There's a couple of things hanging out here. We have rates, separate rates for general employees and firefighters versus law enforcement. And the, the rates stayed relatively the same on this actual determined basis. But when we get into a little bit of the details, we'll see the primary reason they stayed the same was that we're, the primary recognition of the full impact of the assumption change. And on slide 26, we get into the, the impact of the employer contribution rate stabilization program. And the, the rate is for general employees at 11.35% of pay. And it's scheduled to increase 5.75% per year absent some of the items that are discussed below. In the third year, we have the potential if the underlying ADEC or given viscerally exceeds the adjusted central employer contribution rate by more than 1%, an increase of 50% of the difference added. Similar on the flip side, if it, if it worked out the opposite way in year three, if the ADEC is, is less than the, the underlying ECRIS, then there's a potential for a decrease, but that doesn't happen until, until I want 2024. Quote amounts increases, any of these changes that, that can be put upon the plan are adding to the employer contribution rate. There was a good reason for that, by the way, that I didn't mention earlier. You know, when we look at the program and, and the ECRIS program, this is only the second go around of this program. It was implemented back in 2015, if I recall. This concept of putting in rates that stay relatively stable. And a couple of things we identified was, you know, we had the potential that changes could be done to the liabilities of the system, and we weren't reacting to fund those changes. That included quotas and included potential benefit increases. It also included potential changes to the assumptions that happened midstream. And so we wanted to make sure that there was a policy in place to make those things happen automatically. The other element that, that was monitored over the past several years is that the contribution rates for law enforcement, we needed to spread the gap up. Because the real actual costs for law enforcement, it wasn't the 0.75% of pay that we were saying. It was a little over 2% if I remember the actual gap. And so we're phasing in a program to make sure that the, the true cost for law enforcement rates is, is reflected over the course of time. Moving ahead to slide 29. Here we have a history of the actual determined contributions and the ECRIS over the past five valuation dates. In the middle is general employees, firefighters, law enforcement on the right. And I think that the big thing to point out is that you can see the shortfall in law enforcement officers. That's again because the, the policy in place didn't quite capture the full difference in, in rate for law enforcement. That's something that the current ECRIS would address. Slide 30 is the reconciliation of, you know, it's the actually determined amount. So not the final amount being put in, but the underlying actual piece. And, you know, the big thing here, you know, we have amounts for general employees and law enforcement. You can see the difference between general employees and law enforcement is 1.7% or something like that. As you work your way down, the big items here, investment gains helped lower the contribution by 0.86% of pay. But the impact of assumption changes was an increase of 3% for general employees and firefighters and 3.76% for law enforcement officers. And we're only, we're reflecting one fifth of that this year. And that results in the, the actual determined contribution rate. So the low 0.223% there. A lot of the story here is the same, same considerations. I think getting into the highlights of slide 32 is that the board, the elders board actually does have authority to do this. But the considerations are all the same that we mentioned before. I'm not going to go into them. How the numbers on slide 33 are a little bit different. You know, we saw the 2.4% potential amount of new benefit that could be granted. Here it's a little bit higher at 2.66% that could be granted. Uh, the increase in the ECRIS rate that would be added is 0.82% of payroll. If you want a 1% supplemental quota, slide 33 is 0.22% of pay payable for one year. All the considerations on slide 34 are consistent to what we've been discussing in the past. So I won't belabor them because I suspect there's going to be another meeting or two to belabor those elements. Here we have projections starting on slide 38. Projections for contributions, we have to do one for general employees and one at firefighters and another one for law enforcement officers. And the story here is, is looks similar to the, the state portion of the plan, somewhat similar. We see the ECRIS rate up at the top in peel this time. And you can see those amounts increasing systematically over the course of, of time by 0.75% of pay. Under these three projections that we have here, it looks like those amounts will be sufficient to, to, to not require an increase. But again, different things could happen here. And then the underlying amounts that are sitting there are the higher line in cornflower is if you get a 0% return in 2021 and after, the lower line is based around 13% return. One thing that they'll not have it in the, the basis of the projection on slide 37, there is a potential for the contribution rates in the peel up at the top to incrementally go down. When we look at resetting the rates potentially because the ADEC is smaller, these amounts could actually be lower than what's shown here. They would be lower by a bit. And we're going to work to find that, make it a bit more transparent. But, but that's the amount for general employees and firefighters. Uh, when we get into law enforcement, similar, you know, the increase in contributions, the increase, we have a 0% return, but where the ECRIS is actually a bit higher. So there's a, a good chance that those contribution rates could stay in place. And, and the contribution rates up top is what you're contributing. Funded ratio, again, we could have a chart that's only like eight or nine years wide to show when the plan gets to 100% funded, which is a blessing for the visually impaired. Key question or key takeaway is very similar. Market returns, how, uh, we did get a bit of, and it discussed this earlier, but pay was a little bit higher. That's a contributor to the liabilities being a bit higher than anticipated. But again, the two things that really caused the results move was investor returns, more importantly, the approved change in assumptions. You know, in the end, the, these things resulted in, in a higher actually determined employer contributions of 0.22% versus 0.83, which we were projecting last year's projection with 13% versus 12.48%. And that's for general slash firefighters and law enforcement respectively. Slide 43 is a summary of all the assumption changes that were made. Slide 44, we talked about, it's very similar. You want to read this before every board meeting? That's the highlights of the prepared comments.
Wendy? Oh, sorry, questions?
All right, so I have a registered deeds and a fire plan. For the registered deeds, they're 154% funded, so everything's going rather swimmingly over there. The funded ratio did drop a little bit. That's primarily due to assumption changes. So the assumption changes increased the liability just slightly. But otherwise, they're, they're in good shape and the contribution amount is still zero based on, based on the results that we have for this year. And the other plan is the fire plan, which actually took a little bit more to talk about on them. They, same as all the other plans, they have wonderful asset return. They ended up having a little bit of, also a, a gain on their liabilities, but then a, a loss on the assumption changes. So it ended up, their contribution rate though, at, at the end of the day, after putting in all these pieces together, did decrease down from 15.1 million down to 13.1 million. So they did see a decrease in their, their contribution rate. The thing, just to talk about them, and I will defer to Patrick on any, any details on this, but their ECRIS policies, with a new policy was approved in April, and it added a new acronym, the BIFR, the Benefit Improvement Funding Requirement. So now there is a, a new sort of thing that we need to look at if, if a benefit increase is for to be adopted. So on, I guess we're, I don't know if we can jump into the, the fire presentation.
Where'd that word come from?
What's that?
Sign off on it.
The BIFR?
Yeah.
That's Patrick.
Benefit Improvement Funding Requirement.
So on slide 6, I just wanted to talk about the, the policy and the.
We'll take that, make sure you're wide, Larry.
That's right, that's it. All right, so on slide 6, we just summarized sort of what the, what the policy is. The contributions that, that part of the policy did not change. So your board can recommend the higher of the ADEC or 350,000 plus the previous ADEC. And then the, the ECRIS minimum for this year 2023 is 19.7 million. The previous year was 19.3 million. And then moving into what if the board would consider benefit or member contribution increases, there's three things that need to be looked at. The first one being, does the, does the benefit increase in the crew liability can't be any greater than the CPIU increase? The second piece is the, is the BIFR. And then the third piece is maintaining a 50-50 split between the member and state contributions. So if there is a benefit increase that, that would violate that 50-50 split, that a member's contribution increase would also have to accompany it in $5 increase. So on slide 7, we sort of walked through the steps for this year if, if a $1 or $2 benefit improvement were to be considered. So just real quick, if a $1 benefit improvement were to be considered, it would increase the crew liability by about 2.9 million. And if a $2 improvement would increase at 5.8 million, which is basically double amount. And then below that, you can see the increase in the percent increase, which is 0.59 for 1.18. The CPIU increase was 1.36. So either of those types of improvements would satisfy this condition because they're both below the 1.36 CPIU increase. And then the next piece now is we look at what, how much would have to be funded in order for this improvement to take place. Formula itself takes a look at the full cost of, of the improvement, which, just looking specifically at the $1 increase, if it was, if we did a $1 increase was recommended, it would increase liabilities by 2.9 million. And then there could be an adjustment to it depending on the budget status of the plan and also the difference between the actually required contribution and the, the, the stable ECRIS contribution. And so in the case right now, the unfunded liability is about 20 million. And then the difference between the ADEC and the, the policy contribution is about 6.7 million. So adding those two together, if it's less than zero, then you can subtract that from the full cost of the improvement. If it's more than zero, it's just zero. You don't, you don't change anything. So because both on the $1 and $2 improvement, they're both greater than zero. If the benefit improvement were, were to be adopted, 2.9 million or 5.8 million would have to be funded in order for this to take place. And then from there, you have to look at what would happen with the member contribution rate. Both of these would trigger a $5 increase in the, uh, member contribution rate in order to keep a 50-50 split, the normal cost being paid from members and from, from the employee. And then on slide 8, it's sort of, a little bit more of the details on how we came up with the, determined that a $5 increase would be needed. But I won't go into all that. So at the end of the day, the plan, the plan's in good shape. The ECRIS contribution is still exceed the ADEC, and so it is still lowering the unfunded liability. This plan is about 95.8% funded, which is great. Last year it was 92.3%. So these extra contributions aren't really the work that they're intended to do. Is that it, Al Fallout?
Any questions?
Here you go. I entertain a consolidated motion to approve the actuarial reports for the 2020 elders system, the 2020 actuarial evaluation for registered deeds and the firefighters, the rescue squad workers pension fund.
Sheriff, please ask, I make a motion.
Ms. Reader, second it?
No, I didn't because I'm not elder.
I'm going to start putting little tags on. The court will call a roll. Al Fallout? Alan Wontz? Alan Wontz?
Yes, yes.
Brenda Howerton? Brenda Howerton? I'll mute. I don't, I don't hear Brenda. Your pen, turret?
Aye. I, I'm here, yes.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Brenda. Over here? Jeffrey Morris? Jeffrey Morris, over here. Kevin Gordon? Kevin Gordon? I don't hear Kevin. Len Turner? Len Brewer? Melody Brady?
Hi.
And, uh, I guess Vernon Givens.
Thank you, we have a court and approval, thank you. Our next presentation is, uh, probably should move this up closer to the front of the agenda, and, uh, I appreciate, uh, superintendent, uh, staying with us as well as, uh, Director Gibson, and, uh, Kathy Murphy is someone who does a lot of heavy lifting on behalf of the Treasurer's Office of the Orona Department of Justice, and she does a lot of things that, uh, that really help us, uh, stay in compliance and defend the policies that our courts, uh, carry out. And so Kathy, we'll turn it over to you for our litigation update, and thank you for all that you do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I, I'm gonna give a litigation update on, um, focusing on pension spiking cases, and I, um, I think it's maybe, I know we're, um, it's been a long meeting, so I'll try to keep this as brief as possible, but I thought it might be helpful to just give a very brief overview of the pension spiking law for those of you who are newer or haven't thought about this in a while, uh, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So I just wanna, as I say, start out with a very brief overview of the pension, it's sometimes known as the anti-pension spiking law, it's the name is the contribution-based benefit cap legislation, or CBBC legislation. And this applies to both teasers and elders, um, but the litigation that we've had has all come from teasers employers, so I'm only gonna be, um, focusing on teasers. Just as a very sort of high-level overview, for every retiree, um, on or after January 1st, 2015, who was retiring with an average final compensation over a certain threshold amount, um, the retirement system is required to compare the members' contributions over their career to the amount that the pension statute guarantees as a pension. And if there's a significant discrepancy between what the member has contributed and, um, the, the amount of the pension they're entitled to receive, then this, um, CBBC legislation says that either the pension should be capped or an additional contribution should be made to the pension fund. And in the cases that we're litigating now, there is an exception that if the member has been a member of teasers for, uh, since before January 1st, 2015, then the employer pays an additional contribution and the pension is not actually capped. So we've had a lot of litigation, um, I think it's been 29 local school boards and one community college have sued, um, based on these additional contributions that were required from them. Mostly this is focused on the cap factor. The cap factor is something that's used to do these calculations that I mentioned, so that the retirement system has to calculate something to measure whether there's a significant discrepancy between the contributions and the, uh, and the pensions, according to statute. Those calculations involve something called a cap factor. By the, uh, the legislation says the cap factor would be adopted by you, the boards, in, based on a recommendation from the actuary. So the first significant litigation was from several school boards who said this cap factor needs to be adopted through formal rulemaking procedures that are set out in chapter 150B of the general statute. Those of you who may have been on the board at the time, you adopted a cap factor based on the recommendation from the actuary, um, at a meeting by resolution, and these school boards said, "You can't do that, this is a rule, it has to be adopted through the North Carolina Administrative Procedures Act." And that went up to the North Carolina Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court found that it does have to be adopted through rulemaking. So that was the first, first set of cases. And the, the board did in fact go through the rulemaking procedure and adopted cap factor through rulemaking. And the next set of claims that came up in litigation were first a claim that the rulemaking wasn't done properly, and specifically several aspects or several statutory provisions in chapter 150B were identified, and the claim was that these things weren't followed properly. And then the second issue that was raised was even if this cap factor rule had been adopted properly, you can't apply it, they claimed, to retirements that had a credit on, prior to the adoption. So those two issues, so those two issues, I'm hearing a little bit of an echo. I'm not sure what, it's kind of weird to hear myself, talk to myself. Sorry. So so far those issues, in part or together, have been raised in a Superior Court action and in several administrative, uh, sorry, office of administrative hearings actions, and the retirement system has, has been, uh, gotten favorable rulings on those issues. Now, I will say that the, when the claim raised in Superior Court, we, we prevailed, and that was not appealed any further. The claims that were raised in the office of administrative hearings have, with all the two cases, those have been appealed into Superior Court, the first level of appeal. Uh, the, the two cases that have not yet been appealed, their time has not run, so they may be appealed, they may not be, we don't know yet. Uh, so those issues, we're, we're doing okay so far, but they're still pending. And then the final set of issues raised are, um, challenges to the statute itself as opposed to the administration of the statute by the retirement system. Those are, uh, for the most part constitutional challenges. They've been alleged in cases that were filed in Superior Courts, and, uh, courts tend to try and avoid deciding disputes on the basis of constitutional issues, so those cases have been sitting for a while, waiting for some of these other cases to be resolved. And so we, we haven't had a lot of, of movement on those cases, but they're coming up. And, um, I believe Sam mentioned earlier, um, there's a litigation moratorium right now that was recently passed by the General Assembly, so, so we've cleared out all the cases in the office of administrative hearings, everything that happened filed has been moved forward in, into Superior Court, and, um, no more can be filed before July of 2022, according to the moratorium. So we currently have, um, as I say, these, these earlier claims about the rulemaking and whether the rule can be applied to earlier retirements, these claims are now on appeal in Superior Court. We have constitution claims waiting to be heard in Superior Court. Um, there's a total of 29 cases, um, I believe it's 29 cases, uh, to 31 if we get these additional two appeals. Um, so 29 to 30 cases that are currently pending, and with the litigation moratorium, that means that's all we're gonna have at least until July 2022. And I think I mentioned there were 29 local school boards who have filed these claims, one community college, and we have on the order of 40 retirements that are at issue. Uh, I haven't counted lately, so it, it may be a little more, a little less, but on the order of 40 retirements, that is 40 additional contributions that have been requested, and that the school boards are, um, contesting. So that, that's just an overview of what's going on, um, very broad, you know, high level, but if there are any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Any questions from Kathy? Um, I think what we'll do next time Kathy, if it's okay with you, is we'll just put you at the front of the agenda, and you can appear in person, because these are extremely important topics that affect a lot of our stakeholders, and, uh, I don't know how she sounded on the phone, but she has a, if the Braves do as well in the World Series as she does in court, everybody's gonna be happy. But, uh, only sports announcer you'll ever hear from me. But, uh, anyway, she's, uh, won a lot of cases, and, and, and we always try to, uh, let her know how much we appreciate, uh, what she's doing, so Kathy, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Treasurer, and I want to say too, I, I depend a lot on your staff and your attorneys, so Tom and Patrick and, and Ben and Christina and now Tim, they've all been a big part of this, it's all teamwork.
And Tim, Tim's, Tim's crushing. His first mention.
Good for him.
I'm burning one the other, so, uh, yeah. Listen, Kathy, thank you so much, we appreciate that presentation, and, uh, look forward to seeing you in person.
Okay, thank you.
Quickly to our other reports.
One more piece, so back to where I was going last. Death benefit plan, um, I guess we would talk slide three, probably. I'll set up in a picture. So you can see this is the, uh, the deficit, um, has grown considerably over the last year, and that's primarily due to the, the, uh, the subject changes, because the, uh, did the discount rate have changed from 3.75% to 3%, and that's what's driving that, that increase there. Um, so it's one of those, uh, and then I guess on slide five is kind of the high point, so there's 132.9 million dollar gap between the assets and liabilities now, um, based on our GADV 74 projections, the SCRIS is expected to be exhausted by 2065. Um, there's been 12 years of secondary deficits, um, I think in 2016 was the last year that there were changes made, um, and additional changes in provisions, the contribution rates, um, will be needed to address the deficit.
Thank you. Uh, do I hear a motion to accept, uh, the report regarding this debt benefit? State Board? Second, second, thank you. Mark? Any further, any further discussion?
Can I ask a question? It's Barbara again. Sorry. Uh, that, the gap there obviously is concerning. Can you tell us what the plan is on that? What, what do we do?
I can normally answer that question on most any topic, but, uh, I can't answer it on this one, so. Anybody, staff, have you read? Yes, Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is that for people to dial less?
That would be great.
That's not the real plan.
Not within, not within our control.
Okay.
Director Gibson, the, um, the increase in the deficit for this plan is something that needs to be addressed. Captain McDonald has communicated that to us at staff, and, uh, we agree, we anticipate at the January meeting, uh, where typically, uh, alternatives and recommendations are brought to the, to the boards regarding benefits and funding levels, um, that we'll have a discussion with the boards, um, uh, regarding two areas that Captain McDonald has identified as possible areas that could help bring this plan back into balance over the long term. One of those is the premium rates that retirees pay. This plan is fully, this death benefit plan is intended to be fully funded by retiring premiums. So, uh, the two things that can be adjusted are the premiums that retirees pay towards the deficit, or the amount of benefit that is paid out upon the retiree's death. And, uh, so we'll talk about alternatives, um, related to that at the, uh, January meeting. One, uh, just final note on this plan is that, um, uh, in order for any change to be effective in this plan, both the state and the local boards have to agree to enact the change.
Any other questions, Director Gibson?
No, I thank you, that's helpful.
Thank you. Uh, we have a motion, second, no further discussions, part of the call roll, teasers. Was that motion from Jeffrey Winston? It was, okay. Dale Falwell?
Aye.
Barbara Gibson?
Aye.
Catherine Truitt? Catherine Truitt? Dirk German?
Aye.
Sorry, I cannot get off mute. This is Catherine, aye.
Thank you. John Ebigott?
Aye.
Joshua Smith?
Aye.
Beth Brewer?
Aye.
Linda Gunter?
Aye.
Oliver Holly? And Vernon Givens?
Aye.
Thank you, and light motion from the locals elders, regarding death benefit, accepting actuarial evaluation. So move. Homer Dearman? Motion, second. I'll make the second, Tom Brown?
Thank you.
Any further discussion, it's your, uh, part of the call roll.
Dale Falwell?
Aye.
Alan Wancy?
Aye.
Brenda Howerton? Brenda Howerton? Catherine Truitt?
Aye.
Clea Ackerson?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Clea Ackerson, aye.
Aye.
Jeffrey Morris? Kevin Gordon? Len Brewer?
Aye.
Melody Brady?
Aye.
Vernon Givens?
Aye.
We'll now, uh, have a brief, uh, discussion about our contribution-based benefit cap average threshold determination, and, uh, we'll have to vote on that for the local state boards. Wendy, Larry, thank you very much.
Thank you all, perfect.
We'll need two motions from that, then we'll have a public comment, then we'll go around robin, then we'll ask for motion to adjourn.
Uh, good morning. For this one item, there's a brief memo attached to the materials. As Kathy was just describing, uh, by statute, the contribution-based benefit cap or anti-pension spiking situation can only apply to a retiring member if that retiree's four-year average final compensation is at least a certain amount. If it's below that amount, there cannot be a pension spiking, quote unquote, situation. Uh, that, that dollar amount back in 2015 was $100,000 per year, and it's increased every year with inflation according to law. For retirement dates effective this year, 2021, the amount is $110,404.82. We now know the, uh, increase in inflation that will increase that amount for 2022. That, uh, percentage increase in inflation was 5.4%, so when you apply that to the amount, the amount of the threshold for 2022 will be 116,366.68. So if you have a retiree who's, uh, who's four-year average final compensation is less than, than 116,000 in 2022, the pension spiking provisions do not apply to that situation.
Uh, everybody's clear on that? Every time we talk about this subject is for people whose income, average AYP is above 116,000.
And, uh, even for those greater than 116,000, it doesn't mean that there will be a pension spiking situation, it just means that it calls for more math to be done to determine if there was. Uh, and, uh, the courts may vote today to authorize staff to begin incorporating this threshold into administration and communicating it to employers.
Do I hear a motion to accept staff's recommendations regarding this, uh, threshold determination?
John Ebigott, motion? Motion, be made, second.
Linda Gunter, second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any further discussions, the state board, we're hearing another part of the call roll.
Dale Falwell?
Aye.
Barbara Gibson?
Aye.
Catherine Truitt?
Aye.
Dirk German? Jeffrey Winston?
Aye.
Joshua Smith? Len Brewer?
Aye.
Margaret Reader?
Aye.
Oliver Holly?
Aye.
Givens?
Thank you so much, and light motion from the elders board.
Ackerson, so move.
Thank you. Second. Homer Dearman? Thank you, Homer. Any further discussions? Sure, you have another part of the call roll.
Sorry, who had the motion?
Uh, Sheriff, the head.
Okay.
Aye.
Melody Brady?
Aye.
Tony Brown?
Aye.
Bernadette?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion's approved. We'll now go into our public comments. Uh, we have signed up for public comments. We have, uh, Susan Beasley, I think. And then Richard, has anybody signed up, uh, contacting Patty? Uh, Susan, uh, Suzanne didn't, she's, okay. All right. So, uh, sure, Richard wants Suzanne to go first, so, uh, Suzanne?
Absolutely.
Uh, thank you. Members, just, uh, hang with us for a little bit. Uh, we'll hear from public comments, go around robbing, then we'll, 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 we, we will need enough votes to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief, so I don't even need to sit down. I'm Susan Beasley with the State Employees Association. She represents about 48,000 members. The number of those members are retirees, and they have been very clear that they need a couple. Um, the government relations team is meeting with our Board with General Assembly, but we ask the members to please make a recommendation to the General Assembly for recurring call of retirement. Thank you.
Mr. Parker. I will sit down, all right. Mr. Treasurer, uh, boards of trustees, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm Richard Rogers, executive director of North Carolina Retired Governmental Employees Association. I'm speaking to you today in a matter that affects every North Carolina local, state government retiree. This time is different, very different, because we've got money for cost of living adjustment. As you know, state retirees have only had, state retirees have only had received 3% in cost of living adjustments since 2008, which is a decline in pension due to inflation. The situation is even more dire with our local government retirees who have not even received a 1% cost of living adjustment since 2008. While inflation has and always will affect pension values, we stand today in a new era of inflation, where the cost of basic goods like gas, cars, and energy have dramatically increased since the beginning of the year. Couple, couple that with the expected supply chain of vibrations, short, micro shortages, makes, just makes our retirees one of the most vulnerable demographics of our state, and yet they remain often forgotten. I come to you today advocating for all government retirees and saying it's time to provide an adjustment. While we have stated the facts about retired retirees, let us turn this discussion around and talk about how we can achieve a cost of living adjustment. Your oversight, treasurer's prudent management of the retirement funds resulted in a well-funded and resilient system. The ad hoc COLA approach has been an important factor in allowing the retirement system to remain strong. As a result, retiree pension values have had sacrifices, and they have helped provide a stronger pension system. Evaluation that was presented to you today, discussed among you, is full of good news. Investment gains exceeded the same rate of return and have produced nearly $1.8 billion in funds that can be used for cost of living adjustments. These funds should be used to reward retired public servants that have spent a career in protecting and serving their communities and the state. I do appreciate the discussion and questions that have been going on today. I think it is a great start, coming up with a good recommendation that will support retirees as well as provides, continue to provide a strong, uh, pension system that y'all oversee. You have the opportunity and responsibility to provide inflation-abating relief for these dedicated men and women. I and the 65,000 members of our association encourage you to provide an optimal COLA for both local and state government retirees. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parker. With that, uh, we'll go around robbing, uh, for our board comments. Well, to start within the room, if I have anything they'd like to add.
Brown, Mr. Treasurer, uh, I'll just, sort of notice, I've talked to Mr. Kelsey about this already. Uh, I, I am looking forward to using the services of this board, uh, and I'll be retiring as of December, but it's my understanding that I will remain on the board until the governor replaces me. Uh, but I've appreciated the time that I've been here, and I do plan to continue as long as, as long as possible, so appreciate the, uh, support and the time that I've been here.
And thank you for your public service. Keep in mind, I think Ms. Reader has retired since we, uh, last together.
Yeah, uh, and please forgive me for, um, missing the last meeting. There was some confusion with my retirement and my placement on the board, but I'm glad to be here today.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Treasurer, uh, as I do, and if I can, just for a brief few seconds, continue to talk about all the great things that educators and state employees, but sitting in the seat of the superintendent of public education, uh, everything that we've been through over the last 18 months, uh, the resiliency of all of our teachers, our staff, our certified, our classified, uh, the treasurer talks, he called me one time, I missed his call because we were driving, I was driving a bus. Uh, but COVID has been
I haven't told you about Caesar.
No, I love that tip, it's for the other bus.
The round bus.
And I did not answer it, so I did not break any calls. But, you know, our educators, and I called everybody educators, have been over backwards to make sure that our students had a safe, uh, transition in the face of COVID. So anytime that I have this chance, I just want to continue to thank all the educators in the great state of North Carolina for everything they continue to do for our students in the face of uncertainty and everything we've been through with COVID. So, thank you.
Maybe when I retire, I get my CDL license and come down and drive a round bus to Terrell County.
Come on down. We are hired and we've been training online.
I will not tell you what happened to me when I was 16 years old, took bus driver training, but, uh, that's for another day. Uh, anybody on the phone who'd like to make any comments?
I would.
Go ahead.
This is Linda, is that, you referring to somebody online?
Yes.
Is that right? Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. I had to jump in the car and go to my next meeting, so I was trying to keep you on, on the line, if I keep up with everything. Uh, I want to thank everybody for the information that we got today, and I won't belabor the point, but I think I agree with, uh, that if, that we do need to have another meeting in December to talk more about this, and my retirees, I wouldn't be representing them well if I didn't try to look into, investigate, talk with as many people as possible to find out how we could get a COLA. They feel very demoralized, a lot of our retirees, you know, they can't pay their bills, there's nobody to help them, they're not, they're moving in with their children. Uh, it's real difficult, you know, they're living in poverty, especially teachers that retired a long time ago, and with the increased cost of living, it's been really tough, and we've kind of been last on the list. So it's just, it's wicked, just, all we want, we just want the information, and I think never learn it too easily, but just feel like I
Sorry.
You can see exactly how much retirees are making. Retirees are not making a killing. They're barely getting by. And so I think that we as a board owe it to ourselves and owe it to all of our members to do whatever we can to, to see if we can do better by them, because we're here representing them. So I would, I'll come from an individual position in the treasurer's office, but I think the whole group needs, probably need in December, uh, and so I put my name on the list. Thank you so much, I appreciate, um, I appreciate learning as much as I could and all the information you gathered today.
Thank you. Anyone else on the phone?
Yes, this is Alan Boancy with the, uh, Local Government Board. Um, so, good afternoon, everyone. This is sadly my last regular meeting, uh, of the elders board. My term on the town council will end in December, and so I will no longer be able to serve. Um, I've really appreciated this honor and privilege of serving on this board. I appreciate the treasurer, my fellow board members, and especially our staff for all their hard work and devotion to our state. I've always appreciated how prepared our staff has been, meeting in and meeting out, especially with their presentations. Um, I sincerely hope that we can find a mechanism outside of the ECRIS policy to make a cost of living adjustment that our local government employees have deserved and lived for quite some time. As a sitting town council member, I have grown to appreciate greatly the work and sacrifices of town and county employees, not just where I live, but in towns and counties across the state. Our local government and state system employees, retirees for that matter, have given so much to our state. They work long hours, they look after the safety and well-being of our residents across all of our towns and counties, particularly given the investment gains that the system has realized. I would love to see us as a board make a cost of living adjustment. It's critical, I think, for us to find a way that does not increase local contribution rates, because our local governments are struggling as it is right now. To me, it's not just about our retirees or even our current local and state employees who will one day be retirees. Of course, we have an obligation to take care of them whenever possible. It's also about the next generation and communicating to our young people that your time, your energy, your life, the work of local government, and to work with state of North Carolina, and we will make sure that you are taken care of. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you for your service, and, uh, uh, there's a possibility that, uh, Alan could join the, uh, the Hall of Fame of people who used to serve on this board, who went on to serve in the legislature, so we'll, uh, we'll see if all that happens. But Alan, thank you very much, thank you for your service. Anybody else?
Thank you, sir.
I can't endorse candidates, Alan, I was just, I was giving the news for the world.
Giving the news for the world. I got you.
Uh, anything else? All right, uh, Bernadette, thank you for coming, and glad you're doing well, and our false prayers will be with you, and, uh, I'd like to, uh, adjourn our meeting. I mispronounced Sheriff Peterkin's, uh, name earlier, uh, in honor of these, uh, sheriff and, uh, Deputy Hayward. Uh, obviously, there have been others, law enforcement folks who have lost their lives, uh, around North Carolina, those are the two that are on my mind and in my heart today. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the teachers' meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Uh, be further discussion, reviewing the Department of Call and Roll. Dale Falwell?
Aye.
Barbara Gibson?
Aye.
Catherine Truitt?
Aye.
Dirk German?
Aye.
Clea Atkinson?
Aye.
Homer Dearan?
Aye.
Jeffrey Morse?
No.
Uh, Kevin Gordon? Liz Brewer?
Aye.
Melody Brady?
Aye.
Tony Brown?
Aye.
We're here about John. A little bit.
Did you?